We're going to proceed. And so, welcome to our electronic committee of the whole meeting on October the 12th, 2021. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, regional councils practicing physical distancing. Regional Chair Redmond and myself are present in council chamber. I will now call on our clerk to perform the roll call.
Thank you, Councilor Jarrett. Chair Redmond.
Present.
Counselor Armstrong. Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Urb.
Present.
Counselor Foxton. Counselor Galloway.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Jaworski.
Here.
Counselor Jawett.
Here.
Counselor Kiefer.
Here.
Counselor McGary.
Present.
Counselor Nowak. Counselor Shantz.
Here.
Counselor Strickland.
Here.
Counselor Rubenovic.
Present.
And we have regrets from Counselor Lorenz.
Counselor Foxton is present.
Thanks, Counselor Foxton.
Thank you, sir. So I'm looking for a motion to reconvene, and I believe Counselor McGary was ready to do that. Thank you, seconded by Counselor Kiefer. Please use your yes and no buttons so that we can reconvene. Carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. I'll now proceed to the land acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather virtually today is the traditional territory of the Haudenosaunee, Anashtli, and Nootrul people. We acknowledge the enduring presence of the indigenous people with whom we share this land today, their achievements, and their contributions to our community. I'm looking to see if there are any declarations of pecuniary interests under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act today. Counselor Clark, thank you for that.
Thanks, Dory. I'm a little slow with my buttons. Yes, I have an indirect pecuniary conflict of interest to declare due to my employment with YW Kishna Waterloo. Item CSDHOU 21-20, which is the Emergency Shelter Update.
Thank you so much. You should just, I'm being told, you should also declare the conflict from close, please, Counselor Clark.
Thank you. Well, we haven't got to it yet, but when we get back into close later this afternoon, I will be declaring a conflict of interest relating to the Affordable Housing Funding and Development Update, and that is also due to my employment with YW Kishna Waterloo.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated. Okay. And now I'd like to call on Dr. Wong for our COVID-19 presentation. There she is. Hello.
Hello. Good morning, Chair Jawett, and good morning, council. So Kathy will project my slides. Thank you, Kathy. So if we go to the first slide. So a few key messages. Cases in Waterloo region remain fairly stable at this time. Thanks to the very large number of residents in our community who have stepped up to be vaccinated, we were able to do more activities than this Thanksgiving weekend than we were last year. So my sincere gratitude to all those residents in our community who have stepped up to be vaccinated when they were eligible. Thank you. We need, however, to continue increasing our community immunity over the coming weeks and months to achieve the highest vaccination rates possible among our residents. In Waterloo region, approximately 77,000 residents aged 12 years of age and older are not fully vaccinated, and of these, almost 53,000 who are eligible for the vaccine have not yet received a first dose. And in addition, there are almost 82,000 children under 12 years of age who are not yet eligible for the vaccine. So we need to continue to take precautions as well. Next slide, please. Regarding current trends, so in Waterloo region, our case rates remain low to moderate and stable at this time. Hospitalizations and outbreaks have also been relatively stable. Since the announcement that Ontario is introducing a vaccine certificate, there has been an uptick in first-dose vaccinations. Currently, very close to 90% of residents aged and older have had a first dose. 85% of residents aged 12 and older have had a second dose. Their doses have been offered to residents of all long-term care. Regarding cases in schoolchildren, cases in school-aged children, for the most part, reflect spread of the virus in our community overall and among age groups that are less vaccinated. And outbreaks in our schools remain relatively limited at this time. The best way to protect those under 12 who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated is to, one, immunize all those around them, and, two, keep community spread low. In addition to limit the spread of COVID-19 within school and childcare settings, public health is supporting school boards and childcare facilities in the implementation of the Ministry of Education guidance, performing case and contact management in children and educational staff, and assessing and managing school and childcare outbreaks. Next slide, please. Regarding rapid antigen screening, the province has announced that rapid antigen screening for targeted, higher-risk schools and childcare settings will be made available to children in those settings if and when recommended by a local medical officer of health. We are currently working with provincial experts and other public health units on more specific criteria that can be used to identify which schools and childcare centers may benefit from having this additional layer of screening made available to them. We are also working with our local school boards and childcare providers to come up with a process to implement rapid antigen screening, if and when it is recommended. Rapid antigen screening may be useful in higher-risk situations, such as when there are higher rates of COVID-19, lower rates of vaccination, and a history of outbreaks in the school or childcare center. As announced by the province, participation in rapid antigen screening will be for unvaccinated asymptomatic children, and it will be voluntary. Rapid antigen screening cannot be used to test symptomatic children to determine whether they can attend school. It also cannot be used at this time to test high-risk contacts of a case in a class cohort to allow them to return to class. Anyone who has symptoms or has been identified as a high-risk contact needs to get a lab-based PCR test. At this time, we do not have any school or childcare facilities where we have concerns about an elevated risk or ongoing risk of spread. That said, we are working as quickly as we can in consultation with the province and other public health units to determine program parameters, and we will provide more information as soon as we have it. And final slide, please. Finally, regarding Halloween guidance, we are providing the following guidance for trick-or-treaters and those distributing treats. For trick-or-treaters, stay home if you are sick or you are self-isolating. Trick-or-treat outdoors is best. Wear a face covering. A traditional Halloween mask is not a substitute for face covering. It is also not advisable to wear a Halloween mask over your face covering, as that may make breathing more difficult. Wait for others to leave before you approach a home. And finally, remember to follow the regular safety measures like wearing reflective materials, watching for traffic, and using crosswalks. For those who are distributing treats, give out purchased and prepackaged treats. Wash your hands before touching the treats. Wear a face covering. Do not ask trick-or-treaters to sing or shout for their treats. And finally, limit the size of gatherings to what is legally permissible, so as a reminder, 25 indoors and 100 outdoors. And finally, Halloween parties without public health precautions is where we've seen spread occur in the past. So please, again, limit the size of your gatherings and follow public health precautions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wong. Do we have any questions, comments? Oh, Counselor Rubenovic.
Thanks very much. And Dr. Wong, thanks for your update and your and your team's ongoing work. It was great to see people be able to enjoy Thanksgiving yesterday with an increased level of normalcy, although things were still different for many folks. It certainly was welcome, and you saw that and heard that as you engaged with people over the weekend. One question has to do, as we look forward. I see some jurisdictions are starting the registration process for the five-to-11-year-olds so that when finally the vaccine becomes approved and available for them, that they've all been preregistered and, you know, ready to go so that the vaccine process can start quickly. I know you've started doing some preparatory work in this regard, but I'm wondering if we've given that any thought and if it's something we might consider going forward so that we're geared up and ready to get the young people vaccinated as quickly as possible.
Thank you for the suggestion, Counselor Rubenovic. So that is something that I'll take back to our vaccine team, and we can definitely consider whether that's something that we can do as well. And we'll get back to council.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay. So it looks like, thank you very much, as again, I like how many times we heard the word "stable" there. That was very, very comforting. So thank you, Dr. Wong, and appreciate your presentation as always, and thank you, Kathy, for your coordination of this slide. So we'll move on to the delegation portion of our meeting this morning. So we're going to proceed with the delegations as listed on our agenda. I would like to remind all delegations of some guidelines for participation. Please leave your video camera turned off and your microphone audio muted until you are called upon to speak. Today's delegations will be allotted five minutes to speak. Groups of two or more will be allotted 10 minutes. We will also ask that you leave the meeting once your issue has been addressed. You are then welcome to watch the remainder of the meeting, being webcast live via YouTube. If you conduct yourself in any of the following manners, it will result in an immediate removal from our meeting. Interrupting councilor, staff, or other delegations. Derogatory statements about councilor, staff, or others. Turning your camera on at inappropriate times. And hate speech or defamatory comments. So we'll commence with Crime Prevention Council, and it looks like we are calling upon Richard, oh, I hope I get this right, Ibach, and Chris Cowie. There's no staff report. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Jawett, and members of regional council for this opportunity to speak with you today. Before I begin, in keeping with Crime Prevention Council's ongoing discussions of truth and reconciliation, I'd like to pause for a moment to recognize the victims of residential schools. There are some harms that place in our conscience and imperative to never forget, and so we recognize the children who lost their lives in these schools, the survivors who are carrying the trauma, and the family members who had so much that was precious taken from them. May we always hold them in our memories and never forget. Thank you. My name is Richard Ibach, and I'm the current Chair of Crime Prevention Council. I'm here today with my colleague, Chris Cowie, a past chair and a continuing member of CPC. We're very honored to be speaking with you on behalf of our 40 members who represent a broad spectrum of human services and community voices. This group of people is exceptionally committed to community development, and they represent the pooling of insights from many, many others in the various sectors that they work in. I'm honored to work with them, and I've learned so much from them. We're also grateful for the nearly 30 years of support that regional council has given to upstream crime prevention work. Our members asked us to speak with you today to share their unanimously supported recommendation about the future of crime prevention work in our region. This proposal is the culmination of many years of work by all of our members. Next slide, please. A community's identity is in many ways defined by the stories that people tell about what sets it apart from other places. Such stories connect the community's past to its present, and they signal where it's heading in the future, and they symbolize the community's distinctive values. A significant story that distinguishes Waterloo region from many other communities is the story of the birth and flourishing of two innovative approaches to community safety and justice that began in this region and that have flourished here for many years. The first of these is the restorative justice, which has deep roots in the region's culture and has been championed here for many years. And the second is the crime prevention movement, which seeks to mobilize community development efforts to address the root causes of crime in order to prevent crimes from happening in the first place. And I know that when I first moved to this region, learning about the history of restorative justice and the region's commitment to crime prevention through social development helped me to feel that this was a place, a special place to live in. And I can also tell you that when I'm trying to recruit new faculty and graduate students to join my university's department, and they ask what it's like to live in this community, their eyes really light up when I tell them about these two community-based movements. And so today, we're sharing with you the next exciting chapter in this local story, which we believe involves bringing these two movements into a closer, more integrated partnership. These two movements have matured to a point where a partnership is the next logical step in their evolution, and it promises to significantly strengthen the impact of both of these organizations. Next slide, please. So the key changes that we're proposing here is to integrate Crime Prevention Council's multi-sector upstream planning model with Community Justice Initiative's restorative lens and its service delivery infrastructure. This would involve maintaining our leadership roundtable, because, as I said, that multi-sector insight really distinguishes our work and gives us the ability to connect multiple sectors to their shared goals. But the work would now be administered through Community Justice Initiatives rather than through Region of Waterloo. Next slide, please. And so this will be a real continuation of our work, and the intended outcomes would include advancing upstream approaches that address the root causes of social and structural harms, also rethinking safety by reducing reliance on criminalization and punishment and moving towards more restorative and preventative models, and also building equitable and thriving communities by applying restorative and transformative justice principles. Next slide, please. And this work that Crime Prevention Council does really does resonate with the Region of Waterloo's strategic plan in a couple of key ways and significance. First, Region of Waterloo has committed to building healthy, safe, and inclusive communities. And the work that Crime Prevention Council does and the work that it will continue to do in this partnership really does contribute directly to this goal, because the issues that are involved in promoting healthy, safe, and inclusive communities converge at the upstream point, which is the point that Crime Prevention Council has its eye on. Upstream work simultaneously addresses multiple issues such as social exclusion, problematic substance use, food insecurity, economic inequalities, violence, and many others. And research in Canada and beyond shows that upstream investments really are cost-effective. So, for example, research here in Canada shows that every dollar invested in upstream intervention programs saves $5 in the prevention of costs to the criminal justice system. Also, part of the strategic plan of Region of Waterloo involves improving child and youth well-being, and upstream prevention through social development is directly relevant to youth well-being, because this approach emphasizes how early interventions that support the development of youth can prevent later problems such as crime and social conflict. And similarly, Community Justice Initiative's restorative practice programs emphasize training youth in skills to engage in constructive dialogues with peers to resolve conflicts proactively. And so the focus on youth that Crime Prevention Council and Community Justice Initiatives already share will be further deepened through this partnership, and many of the projects of the partnership will focus on engaging youth and developing their capabilities. Also, this partnership that we're recommending here today really does fulfill the region's intent to, in its words, "build internal and external relationships to achieve common goals and resolve community issues." So I'd like to turn it over now to my colleague, Chris Cowie, to tell you more about the unique aspects of this partnership that we're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you again for the opportunity to be able to meet and to be able to talk about this. So just to go over some of the key functions, and then we'll get into some of the benefits. We really see that bringing our two entities together will really provide a better catalyst for structural transformation, and the idea that we will be able to develop collaborative partnerships along the continuum from frontline service to midstream and right to upstream change work, system change kind of work. These are some of the benefits that are difficult to sort of realize as our individual entities. Facilitating and sharing of evidence-based research, which has been one of the functions of Crime Prevention Council right from the start, mobilizing research and identifying upstream intervention opportunities, developing and hosting system change roundtables. And it's difficult, in a short period of time, to really explain the importance of those things, but I would invite people to ask questions if they don't understand how that can be a very sort of powerful tool that we'll be able to use. And we have the hope to be able to create an incubator, which provides mentorship and support for grassroots organizations that adopt upstream restorative focus. Okay, if I could have the next slide, please. So those are just some of the functions that we have, but how does our community really benefit from this as we integrate the rich assets that we have from both organizations, from our Crime Prevention Council along with CJI? So I just want to be able to go through some of the assets that we each bring to the table, and then just describe how those things become really important as we do our work together. So first of all, we have this multi-sector leadership roundtable, which has been mentioned, with 40 committed members, and this is an asset which is not to be overlooked. This is probably the dominant asset that the CPC brings. It's very unusual to have a community where you have 40 committed leaders that represent various constituencies within the community, various organizations, and various people groups, all working with a common goal. And this has been one of the most important features of our Crime Prevention Council in Waterloo region for the last 28 years. When this group gets together, the common interest we have in making our community a better place is really, really felt, and so that is something to be maintained. The other thing that we've learned is that when we do a bit of an analysis, the amount of work that that group contributes amounts to about nine full-time employees worth of value, so really quite a strong value. Also strong in our community development research experience, this has been a piece of CPC's work for many years, also has leadership in developing upstream intervention models, being able to figure out what are those things that we can be putting upstream in order to prevent problems down the line, and a strong community engagement and policy advocacy experience as well.
So, Chris, can I just let you know that time is up, and I know that there's probably a couple of slides left here, so just to kind of give you a little bit of warning there, I'm looking forward to what you have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'll try to go as quickly as I can. Some of these things are really kind of key points. Some of the things that CJI brings to the table are a very well-established administrative infrastructure, respected network of community relationships and partnerships that we use in order to carry out lots of our work, a great deal of expertise in terms of innovating and implementing direct service programs. So one of the things that Crime Prevention Council's not really been able to do on its own is to take some of those ideas and immediately put them into motion within an organizational structure, and that's one of the things that we would be able to do. Our charitable status may seem like something that isn't a tremendous asset, and yet it's one of the biggest assets that we bring to the table. It enables us to be able to get other community supporters on board, something that's difficult to achieve when we're simply a government entity as Crime Prevention Council. But in a charitable status, we're able to get other community supporters really engaged and excited about the work and supporting their various pieces of it. And Community Justice Initiative also has an outstanding volunteer recruitment and training, training and mobilization program that activates over 200 volunteers in our community. So when we come together, we truly believe that we're greater than the sum of our parts. This will enable, a new entity would enable us to develop innovative interventions all along the continuum of upstream to downstream. Also creates many attractive research opportunities for the post-secondary institutions in our community and allows for a much broader base of funders and community support, so many more people can actually get behind the work. Obviously, it reduces the administrative burden on the region, and it accomplishes the work in a much more cost-effective and efficient way, saving the region upwards of $700,000 a year, but maintains that rich collaborative work. And it also, as Richard has already mentioned, affirms the regional government's support for community-led work and signals value to other potential funders and partners and supporters in this community. So it truly does bring an awful lot of new kinds of things to the region. We've long had this vision for a truly restorative region, and that vision has been expanded quite a bit over the last number of years. A number of years ago, it was difficult to even envision where does upstream work fit in a restorative, in the restorative discussion? And what we've learned is that through restorative practices, we can actually do things very, very much upstream to prevent the problems from occurring further down the line. And at the same time, being able to recognize some of the systemic contributors to some of the major forms of conflict that we recognize in our community. So to be able to spot those and to be able to advocate for systemic change that actually will bring a much greater degree of equity and harmony in this community is really what we truly envisioned. So in many ways, what we really see this as is a gift to the region and also a bargain. It's a gift because it brings all kinds of wonderful things to the region, and it's a bargain because it does it in a much more efficient way than we can apart from one another.
Thank you so much, Chris. Really great presentation. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns? Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Counselor McGary, please.
Thank you very much. And through you, Madam Chair, I am really excited to see the vision that has been laid out in front of us. I've been part of Crime Prevention Council since 2007, except for about four years, and I'm one of two regional reps on the committee, and I know the incredible amount of work that's gone in, not just from Richard and Chris, but all of the members of both organizations and our community partnerships in order to finally define a vision moving forward. And I find this very exciting. I think we're at a crossroads here in what we can see in our community on this piece. I think that the proposal is a real culmination of many hours of brainstorming and discussion and revising in order to actually get to the vision in front of you. I did want to clarify a little bit of what Chris Cowie had to say about system change roundtables and also his statement about addressing contributors to system change. I think all of us on this call are recognizing that we need to do more work in our community in order to have everybody succeed in life and to do some upstream prevention so that we can see a change in our community going forward with everybody succeeding. So that would be my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
... community going forward with everybody succeeding, so.
Much appreciated. Much appreciated. Okay, so we'll move to Counselor Clark. No?
I think Richard wanted to respond to Counselor McGary.
I wasn't sure if, if you were trying to or not. I apologize.
Oh yeah, worry about that. Yes. Sorry about that. Yes, thank, thank you for the question, Counselor McGary. So these, uh, system change roundtables, the idea there is you bring together people from across these sectors to focus on a particular problem and bring their different sector knowledge to generate new solutions to it. So it's to identify kind of novel leverage points to do exactly as you're saying, Counselor McGary, to, to move more upstream, finding ways to prevent problems from happening before, before they begin. So, you know, there are many complex problems in our community. Community polarization, for example, is a problem that crosses, has, spans across different sectors. Bringing in each of those sectors' perspectives on that to sort of figure out, okay, how can we work together to address this common problem and pool our knowledge? So the idea would be to, to have problem-focused discussions across sectors. And, and absolutely, as you're saying, you know, the, the point is to look towards upstream solutions, to think preventatively. You know, it's really about intergenerational solidarity. I think that's the really special thing about this council, Regional Council's commitment to upstream work is it really is visionary because it's thinking about beyond the immediate concerns to thinking about the concerns of the next generation and planning ahead. And as we all see in the sort of the context of this pandemic, that looking towards the future, it really does pay off to invest in that now. So thanks. I hope that addresses your question, Counselor McGary.
Thank you. And Elizabeth, did you, sorry, Counselor Clark, do you still want to be in the running here?
Sure. Thanks. Just the, you did touch on it and the materials that we received in advance did also touch on it. I wonder whether you can talk a little bit more about how your, your, your two entities, as well as your sort of respective combined entity, will, will address social justice and equity? And how you will involve BIPOC leadership as an example?
Yeah. Chris, are you?
We'll speak to, go ahead, Richard.
Okay. Well, one very concrete way, Counselor Clark, is through the incubator that Chris was describing. Because one of the key functions of this proposed partnership is going to sort of serve to provide mentorship, resources and, and support to other organizations, other social justice organizations in the community. And so, you know, that's one key way. We also are very much focused on equitable representation around our roundtable and bringing in a variety of community voices. And we've seen that that really kind of strengthens and enriches our work. Chris, I don't know if you had something to add to that?
Well, the only thing I would add to that is that, you know, there are many of these fledgling kind of organizations that represent various people groups that have a very difficult time actually finding the funding to do what they do and actually getting some traction in what they do. One of the things that's been a, a, a real piece of our direction at CJI is to do whatever we can behind the scenes in order to be able to animate those groups in a different way, to be able to support them. We hold grants for two community agencies right now and we're about to hold it for a third one. And these are all groups that represent various people populations that have traditionally had a difficult time getting some traction on, on, on their issues. So it's a, we've developed relationships that feel very comfortable for us and very comfortable for them. And we're able to, we're able to, to supply some mentorship and get them moving. I really believe that that is the better way to be able to do this kind of work, is to be able to support a little bit more behind the scenes. These groups that have traditionally not had a real voice of their own do not need that they're advocating on their behalf. They need us to be able to assist them in the best ways so that they can actually utilize their voice in a, in a positive way. Now, with that said, at the same time, as a, a leadership roundtable, when we begin to see some of these systemic things that may be causing some obstacles and causing some problems, then it does behoove us to actually identify those things and to propose things that we would, we would believe would be solutions as well. And we would be doing that in concert with, with those organizations that I've, that I've, that I've mentioned.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Galloway.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Richard and, and Chris for doing a great job in presenting the proposal that Catherine and I have been certainly a part of quite a number of meetings to, to give advice on, on the proposal itself. And the, the message that I sent out to all members of Regional Council last night certainly enunciates my support for this proposal and for the reasons that I provided. I'm glad that Elizabeth asked the question she did because the, in addition to all the other strategic objectives that Richard detailed and the linkages to the region's strategic plan that this particular proposal accomplishes, the anti-racism objectives that we have are greatly served as well by, by this proposal, particularly in regards to some of the, some, some of the, the changes that the Crime Prevention Council has made. But, but particularly with CJI's inroads into all different types of marginalized groups in, in our community, which is, is well-established and, and well-entrenched in their, in their particular work. The, two things, I have a question and then I just wanted to reiterate that my hope is that at the end of this discussion, we can provide direction to staff to, to do up a report that would come back within a cycle or two to, to, that, that then Regional Council through Committee of the Hall could, could actually move forward on. Today is really just the, introduce this, put it on the radar, get it into a track, onto a track so that then Regional Council can make a, hopefully a positive decision on the, on the request. But what I did want to ask, Richard, particularly maybe Chris as well, is the ongoing relationship that this proposal anticipates for the, the new model to have with, with the region of Waterloo. It's not as if the new model is going away and, 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 and the region will, will, will be a funder hopefully and, and not hear from it, but there's actually an ongoing relationship from a variety of points of view in terms of research, programming, et cetera, that is being proposed here. So maybe you could just go on about that for a minute.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks, Counselor Galloway. And absolutely, we, we see this as a continuation, but the sort of the next evolution in the work. But we definitely see it as a continuation of the partnership with the region of Waterloo. And as I said, we very much appreciate the support that region Waterloo put behind developing these concepts. But we anticipate maintaining a robust, collaborative and an accountable relationship with Regional Council. And, and we've, we've learned from your, your feedback too. And you know, very much the alignment of our work with, with the regional, the region's strategic plan has helped us to sort of provide that, that context for our work. And we very much would welcome and appreciate continuing to have regional counselors on our leadership roundtable. That, that input from regional counselors has really helped us to keep abreast of what's going on in the region and align our work with it. And we would certainly want to continue that. Also, you know, the, the Regional Council's unanimous motion to support upstream initiatives really did help to kind of fuel our proposal. And we kind of really drew on that to, and so I think, you know, that feedback between how you as regional counselors are sort of seeing issues in the region and the community members that we talk to, that, you know, really does help to enrich our work. And so we would certainly be seeking to continue that, that collaborative relationship with the region of Waterloo.
Okay, much appreciated.
Madam Chair, if I could just say that, you know, when it's appropriate, I like to suggest direction and to staff, as I previously indicated. I'll leave that in your hands.
So I'm told we can do that after the question. So Counselor Shontz.
Thank you. My questions have been answered, but I, I just want to take a, a brief moment to thank both Crime Prevention and Community Justice for their tenacity and congratulate you on your tenacity and, and your work and foresight over the last, what was it, 30 years? To, to get to where we are today, I think part of the reason we're, we're doing well in, in the pandemic is because of collaborations such as this. So I look forward to the continuum that, that this new partnership will, will provide and to, to becoming truly a restorative region. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the, the presentation to you on both Mr. Ibach and Mr. Cowie. And I was particularly like to hear Mr. Ibach in his presentation say that you see this as an exciting next chapter in, in moving forward. And so groundbreaking work here in the community with both CPC and Community Justice Initiative many years ago, developing these two programs and now building on it in a very significant way. And so thank you for the, the vision and as Counselor Shontz said, the tenacity and working together. I think this is a clearly a win-win for the two organizations, but I think the bigger win is for the community. And thank you for making this a big win. My, my one question was asked by Counselor Clark on the social justice inequalities and and particularly the upstream work that the region is so concerned about. And it was good to hear on your response to that and what your intent is going forward. So, so thank you for, for this trip, taking this to another whole level, which will be another model for Waterloo region that the rest of the country will want to look at and, and perhaps duplicate as well. And I'm forward to supporting this when the time is appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I believe Chair Redman is next. Oh, okay. Yep, go ahead. Was he? It doesn't look like it on here this time. So sorry about that. Sorry about that. Counselor Verbanovic?
Well, it's okay. Chair Redman could have gone first.
I'm channeling Mr. Lochner right now. We're all being very polite. I think that this too is a very, very exciting next step. And I guess the one thing that I thought I heard and I'd like to circle back, and not that this is all about money, because this is about leveraging the involvement of the region. But Richard, was it you that said, or Chris, that there was a savings of $700,000 a year? Or did I mishear that?
That, that's not per year. That would be over the five-year proposal. So, yeah, not per year.
Oh, not per year. Okay. And if I could just comment, when we refer this to staff, again, I think this is, the synergies here are just sort of multiple. I would really like staff to look at and perhaps both Chris and Richard, your groups have looked at them, but I think of the children and youth planning table. I think of the role that the Ontario Health Teams have with the health and wellbeing of, of our community. And I would be really interested to know in wellbeing Waterloo region, sort of how those synergies mesh and where the overlaps are, because those are also other initiatives that are heavily supported by the region. And I would see would have a mutual benefit. But it would be nice to have it, have it demonstrated or know that, that there won't be duplication, but this will rather be value-add.
Counselor Verbanovic?
Well, thanks. Thanks very much. And Chris and Richard, thanks so much for the, for the presentation and, and the great work that the, that you put in on this proposal. And thanks to Counselors McGary and, and Galloway for bringing the Regional Council voice to the working group that, that brought this before us. You know, I, I reflect back on the, the Crime Prevention Council and its, and its history and all of the, the great work that it's done over the last couple of decades. I, I think back to the, the Safe and Sound Program back in 2000 that impacted the, the Christopher Champagne, the Sunnydale and the, and the Kingsdale neighborhoods in the, in the three urban centers, the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Toolkit in, in 2004, which in many, you know, ways was the, the precursors to, to some of the, the, the neighborhood work that I know we're doing in Kitchener and Waterloo now. And then, of course, the InReach Program, which was such a successful program in terms of getting young people to choose alternatives to, to, to gang activity that, that existed from 2009 to 2013. And, and unfortunately ended because of a, a cut to federal funding and, and then other things like Just Say Hi. And then, Chris, in terms of CJI, I know for Karen, Tom and myself and, and, and Counselor Rance, Mark Yancey had such a strong history with, with your organization and, and, and restorative justice work that he's really led in many ways earlier in, in, in his career. And so, you know, to, to think about now taking what has been such a success and building on it and moving it to the next level in terms of the kind of justice center that's being talked about really excites me. I know that, that our region actually, you know, we often talk about being world-class. And in fact, the work that we've done in this region truly has been world-class on, on this front, whether we're talking, you know, with other municipalities across the country, whether we're talking with people at UN Habitat that talks about the work that this region has done in terms of crime prevention. And this really has an opportunity for us to, to build on the work of, of so many partners and take it to the next level and continue to be a model for, for Canada and beyond. So I'm, I'm excited by the motion that Counselor Galloway is going to bring forward. And, you know, while sure, saving money is, you know, as Chair Redman mentioned, is, is, is a bonus when it can happen. I would also say that I see these as much-needed investments and investments that will need to be made over a period of years so that ultimately the system as a whole ends up seeing savings, you know, based on that, that famous figure we've all often referenced, which is for every dollar invested at the front end, save $7 in the back end. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Verbanovic. I too want to add my congratulations on a very good, comprehensive presentation. And I did enjoy a stint on crime prevention and I learned an incredible amount when I was there. And I'm grateful for the people that serve on that. Certainly on the Crime Prevention Council, we had stakeholders that, that were enviable in the community because everybody was represented. And I thank Chris for his tenure and, and pushing so many good issues at the front and center of that and even spending considerable amount of time with me on that first day when I was trying to learn about all the intricacies. So thank you for that. Great presentation. And so for now, what we're seeing here is Counselor Galloway has requested that staff come back with a report with regard to Waterloo Regional Crime Prevention Council and how we can move forward with this proposal. If there are no objections from Council, are staff good to get this report back to Council during the next cycle? That is my ask. So who am I looking to from a staff perspective? There he is, our own Mr. Lochner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We definitely can bring that back.
All right. Much appreciated. So I think that, I think that we'll take that as staff direction, correct? And for those of you who look forward to our bio breaks at the, at the perfect time of 10:30, you're, you're there. perfect time of 10:30, you're there. So we'll take 10 minutes now and then resume for item 4.2, which I'm sure will be just as exciting as a debate. So please take your 10 minutes. We'll see you back here at 10:37, Will says he's being exact, so you're not getting the extra couple. See ya.
And we are on air, so we'll commence the next item. Evidence for Housing First and Ending Unsheltered Homelessness. And I believe we are going to have opening comments for our presentation from our own Ryan. And then we're going to move on to the delegations as listed and we'll, we'll start now. Okay. Ryan, are you there?
I'm here, Madam Chair, and thank you and good morning, councilors. The, the report included as part of today's committee of the whole package outlines the evidence and particular focus on the research regarding the Housing First approach and promising practices for ending unsheltered homelessness. The reported committee is also seeking council endorsement of and support for those evidence-based methods for ending homelessness in Waterloo region. I think you're well aware, but Housing First is a, is a well-studied and researched approach to ending homelessness that has been demonstrated and applied across the country and really North America. And given this robust evidence on the effectiveness of the approach, it's widely held as a best practice for ending homelessness. Based on research, training, and practice of the Housing First approach locally, provincially, and nationally, the region has been implementing Housing First within our local stability, housing stability system since 2007. As the service manager and community entity for housing and homelessness, the region of Waterloo will continue to provide that leadership in ending homelessness through continuing to identify people that are experiencing homelessness by name and prioritizing them for housing support based on their housing needs and preferences through our coordinated access system. We'll continue to quantify homelessness and the resources needed to end it on an ongoing basis, including monitoring trends and rapidly responding to prevent and end the experience of homelessness. We'll continue to reaffirm that permanent housing is the answer to homelessness and maximizing investments in new affordable and supportive homes. Lastly, we know that communities thrive when everyone has a place to call home, a place that is their own, where they feel comfortable, safe, and a part of the community. This is what we're working towards in Waterloo region. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ryan, for those intro comments. And our delegations as listed, I'm going to call for Jeffrey Nelson of Waterloo first. Jeffrey, there you are. Welcome, Jeffrey.
Good morning.
Do we have a time limit? We have a time limit, Jeffrey, so you'll, five minutes, you can see it above my head here?
Okay, I'll follow it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm just going to, to say a bit about Housing First in this region. So in 2015, the region provided funding for 40 rent supplements for people experiencing homelessness. And one of my students and I conducted an evaluation of that pilot program. The rent supplements were found to be effective in reducing homelessness compared with usual treatment. Both groups received stepped home services, but those who received the rent supplement achieved 81% of them.
Jeffrey, you've gone on mute and we've missed that comment. Can you, yep?
Yeah, I'm, get my arrow down there. So the figures are 81% stably housed for people with a rent supplement, 24% for those in the comparison group. The number of rent supplements was increased quickly to over 100. And in 2018, case management services for people with experiencing homelessness were integrated into one program by Lutherwood, the Path to Home. Since 2018, we've seen no new funding for rent supplements, no new staffing to serve people in Path to Home or any other Housing First program. Instead, we've seen the proliferation of encampments, better tent cities, and tiny homes. According to regional staff, the number of people experiencing homelessness has increased from 248 in March 2020 to 356 in July 2023. So we are now moving backwards, rather than forwards, on the implementation of evidence-based practices like Housing First. According to the research from the At Home Chez Swa project, Housing First that's supported by assertive community treatment does save money also about 60, over 60%. So the initial cost, $20,000, but then there's a cost recovery. And for intensive case management, the cost is about $14,000 per year, but they, and they receive, they save a smaller amount, 46%, but there's still cost reductions in other areas, health and social services, justice-related services. In 2017, with Canada's National Housing Strategy, the previous mandate that communities must use 65% of their funding for Housing First has been dropped. I suggest concretely that if all the people in the better tent city, all 100, needed assertive community treatment, the cost of a new program to serve them would be roughly $2 million per year. And it would cost about $7 million per year for all 356 people who've been identified as chronically homeless. Other places have shown that homelessness can be eliminated. Finland is a whole country that's doing it. In the U.S., there's been significant progress with veterans. And so I think where we're at is the federal and provincial governments need to resume their role as a leader in the adoption of Housing First. Rolling out portable rent supplements for people experiencing homelessness, providing incentive funding for ACT and intensive case management programs to partner with Housing First. Now, the National Housing Strategy includes $400 million over 10 years with a goal of cutting chronic homelessness in half. So a case needs to be made, and I think it can be easily made to government, that large regions like Waterloo need a funding plan to address homelessness with evidence-based approaches. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll look for Marie. Oh, sorry. Chair Redmond.
Thank you very much, and I'm sorry I was so slow on the hand. Thank you very much for the presentation. I just would note, I'm frantically trying to find the information, Jeffrey, but I think the announcement was made through our funding for Indigenous, Black, and racialized community members that the 60 families will be helped with a rent supplement this year and 200 next year. So we are continuing to invest in this model of supporting affordable housing.
Good. Thank you.
Councilor Radomich.
Thanks, Mr. Nelson, for, for coming in today and for, for making your presentation. And, and I couldn't agree with you more that, that, that certainly, you know, the, the Housing First model is ultimately something that, you know, we need to strive for, and I think you're, you were, you were absolutely right in identifying that, you know, additional funding from our funding partners, particularly the, the federal government is, is, is key on this going, going forward. You know, we do know that, you know, within our region, we've seen two tranches of, of funding, one that's been announced, the second one that we're waiting to hear on the details of. But the, the point being that, you know, that, that funding, the Rapid Housing Initiative, probably is covered off somewhere between a, a one quarter and one third of the need across the country in terms of the, the homelessness piece in particular, and there's still a, a ways to go. I, I do wonder from, from your perspective, you know, as we strive to address the, the needs of, of individuals in the meantime, between now and when, you know, appropriate housing, supportive housing can be found for them. What are your thoughts around, you know, how, how best to, to serve that population?
Well, it's a very good question. What are we going to do about all the homeless people in this region, whose numbers are still increasing? And I give my hat, tip my hat to people who are providing support and doing the best to get people out of shelters. At the same time, though, we can't rely exclusively on stopgap measures. We need to take a forward view. Are we going to get these people permanent housing? We have to have both, right? So if we just continue to invest in a reactive system, what the previous presenters call a downstream system, we're never going to get anywhere because it's getting worse over time with less money allocated to these kinds of programs. So I, I think we need to be compassionate and provide some of the services that are already being provided, but we also have to have this forward view. What else are we doing to solve this problem?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Seeing no further, hands up. I have to check the side one, okay. And, and we're looking for Marie Morrison, Director, Built for Zero, Canada, Canadian Alliance to End Homelessness. There you are. Hi, Marie, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. Can you see my screen there?
We can, thank you.
Perfect. It's wonderful. Thank you. So through you, Madam Chair, to members of regional council, thanks for the opportunity to speak to the report recommending keeping Housing First and housing-focused approaches front and center in your efforts to address, reduce, and end homelessness. Some of you may remember me when I was privileged to work at the region a number of years ago in the position that Chris McAvoy now ably holds. I moved on to take what I learned at the region to work with the Canadian Alliance to End Homelessness, a nonprofit that leads a national movement of individuals, organizations, and communities working together to end homelessness in Canada. The Alliance has five key initiatives, including an annual national conference, training, and technical assistance, supporting several allied networks, and advocacy at the provincial and federal level. And the program that I work specifically with is Built for Zero, which the region of Waterloo is a part of, a national change effort helping a core group of leading communities end chronic and veteran homelessness as the first step to ending all homelessness in Canada. Your report references the work of Built for Zero in the U.S. and Canada, demonstrating that targeting resources to end homelessness through a system that coordinates access to a range of permanent housing options is an approach that is successful in reducing and ending homelessness. And in the U.S., they have 89 communities currently participating, and 14 of those have ended homelessness for one or more population groups. 43 communities have achieved a measurable reduction from the 61 that have demonstrated quality, real-time data to make that claim. In the Canadianized version of this approach, we have 39 communities from five provinces and one territory who are participating, with 27 communities having achieved quality, real-time data, of which six have confirmed a measurable reduction in chronic homelessness. And now two communities actually have ended homelessness for a population, Medicine, Alberta, for chronic homelessness, and London, Ontario, for veteran homelessness. And what we're learning it takes to achieve these kinds of results is having a local operating system that is built for ending homelessness, designed to ensure that homelessness is rare, brief, and nonrecurring. Begins with having a clear, shared, measurable, community-wide goal for ending homelessness that a community really rallies around. And in Built for Zero, we use a definition of functional zero, so getting to a point where there are more people being connected to housing than there are entering the homelessness response system. We really can't get to our destination if we're not all driving in the same direction. Then it's about having a discipline for a continuous improvement response that can flex in the face of changing conditions as the problem continues to evolve. And this begins with having a nimble, multi-agency command center team that takes responsibility for getting to zero, and so this team would include everyone who touches the issue of homelessness, including upstream partners that work together every week towards their shared definition of zero. Ad hoc teams are ready to spring up and stand down based on key problems to solve at any given time. All agencies in a community collect and report quality, real-time by-name data on people experiencing homelessness in a shared database. They use this shared real-time data, including inflow and outflow dynamics, to measure the overall number of people experiencing homelessness is going up or down, and to test different strategies and interventions to see what drives reductions. Having a menu of proven technical strategies, including universal to evidence-based recommendations, and a streamlined, user-centered housing process. Once a community has a clear picture of homelessness in their community at any given time, they can convene key stakeholders to test strategies and ideas to target system improvements based on what their data is telling them is getting results. Having flexible housing and service resources, of course, including a robust investment in a range of permanent housing options. Communities leverage their data to really align community need to existing resources and to help identify and secure additional housing resources and targeting them for the greatest possible reduction in homelessness. I want to recognize and highlight the good work in areas where Waterloo region stands out, from what I see in the work happening in communities across the country, and to really encourage you to stay the course with your housing-focused approaches. This includes having a stated goal to end homelessness by 2025. You were one of the earlier communities in Canada to adopt Housing First programming, by-name listing, coordinated access, and having the shared data system like you do in HIFIS. Really recently centralizing your diversion even further to really kind of close the front door and explore safe and alternative options to shelter. Having a housing-focused, really service-first approach, rather than criminalizing the approach of unsheltered homelessness, and having a shelter framework that really works towards being low barrier and housing-focused, and of course, treating people experiencing homelessness as neighbors deserving of kindness, dignity, care, and a home. You've created really solid strategies and pathways for ending family homelessness, which is not necessarily true of all communities in Canada. You have a commitment to a variety of housing and support options, as evidenced through all previous work on affordable and supportive housing and building better futures, which is really a bold goal of 2,500 homes in five years, and just leveraging the supportive partners, other communities' best practices, and being an engaged and caring community. So I know this work is hard of ending homelessness.
Marie, your time is up, so can I ask that you wrap up as best you can and get, get the high notes? For sure, we want to see those. Okay, thank you.
Yep, definitely done, but important work, like, I just know this is hard, and important work is never easy, and I know Waterloo region knows that just because something is hard does not mean it's impossible. That was all I had.
Well, that's a beautiful last statement, so much appreciated. So we're looking for some questions, and I see Councilor Verbanen goes first.
Thanks, thanks very much, and thanks, Marie, for, for joining us. It's great to see you again. The, thanks for your, for your presentation today, and when you referenced your, your organization, I presume, I presume that your organization has adopted the U.N. position on, on, on right to housing?
Absolutely, yep. And quite involved with the Right to Housing Network that works across Canada.
Right. And, and I, I agree with you 100%. You know, it's really important for us to be ambitious and to strive to address homelessness and, and to work towards that goal of 2025. But as we go sort of from now till then, there's obviously going to be folks who are, who are impacted, and folks who are, you know, in our, in our shelter system, folks who are in camp, in encampments, folks who are utilizing, you know, alternative programming like a Better Tent City as, as a step in between. Sort of what, what's your sense or, or thoughts as we, as we tackle, you know, this issue and strive towards 2025? Obviously need federal government partnership in it, but, but knowing that we're not going to get from here to there, you know, tomorrow, and, and obviously need to look after these individuals in the meantime. Any, any thoughts or perspectives on that?
Yeah, thanks for that question. You know, I think continuing to leverage your real-time data, that is your most powerful tool for being really clear and creating real visibility of what's going on in your system, so that you can iteratively address what is a constantly changing problem. And I think you can then use that data to make system improvements, because, you know, absolutely housing and more resources, but also a lot of our systems don't flow as well as they could, and so I think having that data helps you make those system improvements so that you can really figure out exactly what it is you then need to ask for in terms of the gaps that are happening in your community.
If there was, and you obviously have a great knowledge about Waterloo region, if there was sort of two or three things that, you know, you felt that we needed to look for from our provincial and federal partners, what those top two or three things would be? What, what, what would you say to that? What, how would you respond to that?
Yeah, I, you know, I think, again, I just think your data is your most powerful tool to pull out in a really data-informed way those gaps in your community around, around housing, around continuing reaching home. I know that there are challenges with some of the COVID funding that's now coming to an end, and I think people have done some really creative, housing-focused things with that data. And so I think encouraging, you know, provincially for them to stay the course with by-name lists, which they're the first province in Canada to adopt a by-name list approach and, and have them continue to lean into that good work, and then federally, just, I think, to continue to support the work that you're doing. I think it's also interesting to note, there is a new $45 million pilot investment around ending veteran homelessness, and so I also think there's some interesting opportunities there to leverage some resources. How can we bring all of the resources available to bear to really target it towards addressing your goals?
Great, thanks so much, Marie.
Apologies, Councilor McGarry.
Thank you, and through you, Chair, to the delegation, I was very interested in your presentation, Marie, and in particular, looking at the shelter system, when we talk about low barrier and, and really trying to ensure that our shelters focus on housing. Could you just sort of further define what low-barrier shelter system would look like? Thank you.
So, you know, I think recognizing traumas that people have faced and, you know, issues that they're dealing with that have, you know, sometimes led to becoming homelessness and, and often develop more so while people are experiencing homeless, is making sure that there is a really trauma-informed harm reduction approach that is happening in shelters to ensure that those who most need to access it are able to do so.
Thank you. And the second piece was on focusing on housing. Would this mean that the vision would be that there are housing specialists that connect with residents of shelter system in order to try and find either transitional or supported housing in the area? Is that what you mean by, by focus on housing, or is it more focused on building more, which, of course, we all need?
You know, I think it's making sure that the intention of shelter is a pathway to finding housing, and that every person that works within the system is having housing conversations and identifying that that is the role of the service that's being provided right from when someone enters into the door and problem solving. I mean, a by-name list isn't meant to be, you know, a static waitlist, it's meant to be a dynamic, you know, problem-solving navigating tool to help look at all kinds of options and creative options, which I know that Waterloo region has certainly done to help folks move into housing. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, any other questions? Then I'd like to, I'd like to ask just a quick one. And so, thank you for a great comprehensive presentation. I guess I'm, I'm asking about, we're probably going to get a PIT count soon, and, and I, I don't know what inflow is going to look like, but I, I'm assured that there is some. And then, of course, there's the old concern we've had for a long time, that there's a portion of the homeless community that are not interested in the structural, the structural solutions that we are presenting. So have there been any nuances or any changes in, in learning when it comes to this population on, on the barriers for those who are not interested in the options that we've traditionally put forward?
You know, I think people always are looking for, you know, what feels safest to them, what most benefits them, as, that's how we, we all make decisions, right? And so I think it's really about sort of that user-centered conversation about what it is that those folks need, and the options that they're looking for that help them feel safe and supported. And I think, you know, that's, that's going to be individual to everyone. I think continuing to present the option of, of housing and presenting it in different ways, presenting that often, and really finding out what it is those folks need.
Thanks so much, Marie, I really appreciate it, and it's nice to see you again. So thank you.
It's great to see you. You know, and the other thing I would add is I know a lot of, you know, ending homelessness is about taking like a, a public health approach. I mean, this is a health issue, and so partnering and bringing on board, and if I could actually add to my comment to Councilor Verbanovic, is, is engaging the health sector and encouraging the province and the federal government to help make those connections as well.
Thank you. Okay, and we are looking for Ian, wait a minute, I just want to check, okay. Ian DeJean, Ian DeJean, President and CEO of Org Code Consulting, Inc. There he is. Hello, Ian, welcome. And you have five minutes.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair, and good morning to other elected officials, regional staff, service providers, and all of other parties' interest in this important topic today. As noted, my name is Ian DeYoung, I'm the President and CEO of Org Code Consulting. The mission of my organization is to assist organizations and communities make homelessness rare, and if it does occur, to ensure it is brief and nonrecurring. We provide technical assistance, guidance, and support to the likes of the Canadian Shelter Transformation Network, which is a national movement to ensure home shelters and services are housing-focused. We provide assistance to the Canadian Alliance and homelessness, and its work on communities of practice to being housing-focused, through especially the likes of shelters and street outreach. I'm also a member of the Capacity Building Network of the National Alliance and homelessness in Washington, D.C., which places considerable emphasis on unsheltered homelessness, a consultant to the Australian Alliance to End Homelessness, a member of the HIFIS National Working Group, one of a handful advisors to the Day One Family Fund for Jeff Bezos. one of a handful advisors to the Day One Family Fund for Jeff Bezos, and the author of the Friesen Press bestseller, The Book on Ending Homelessness. The consultancy work of myself and the people employed by Org Code helps organizations and communities become more housing-focused and unrelenting in their pursuit of ending homelessness. For example, we have been honored and privileged to be part of the Medicine Hat Alberta story of ending homelessness, as well as helping large shelters like Calgary-Dropin, which is Canada's largest shelter, become more housing-focused with huge reductions in chronic homelessness and lengths of stay. We also provide assistance on encampments to a number of Canadian communities to help sustain a housing focus to the work of serving people that are unsheltered. We have assisted the federal government of Canada on matters related to reaching home and have assisted provincial and state governments, as well as local municipal governments in policy, training, evaluation, research, planning, and effective leadership. I've also been an expert witness in US federal court on unsheltered homelessness. I could go on, but to be clear, ending homelessness is my passion and the passion of my company. I am passionate about data-driven, evidence-informed, and evidence-based promising and best practices in the pursuit of preventing, reducing, and ending homelessness. Housing is the only known cure to homelessness. Supports to stay housed are customized based upon the unique strengths and needs of the individual couple and family. Anytime we talk about homelessness, if we're not talking about solutions at the same time, we're having the wrong conversation. There are two main reasons I would urge you to keep the system of care focused on housing. The first is the moral reason. The second is the financial reason. Morally, I would like to start by sharing a different typology on homelessness. That is to say, only three types of people will ever experience homelessness. Someone's parents, someone's sibling, someone's child. In responding to homelessness, the community has a choice. Do we see homelessness as a problem to be warehoused, out of sight and out of mind? Or do we see people experiencing homelessness as having untapped potential to be nurtured and supported? Do we believe as a society, we will be judged by how we serve the most vulnerable amongst us? And if so, should we focus on solutions or should we focus on Band-Aids? Are we able to be truly compassionate and without judging people, appreciating that many people have a history started with trauma, housing insecurity, violence, economic poverty, and such? Can we shift our thinking from what's wrong with you to a more appropriate framing of what happened to you? Financially, there are prudent reasons to hold the line in ending homelessness rather than managing it. The best recent cost estimates in encampment response within enforcement focus comes from Apt Associates in 2019. It shows a cost per unsheltered person per year and encampment requires an investment of up to $6,208 US per person per year. Simply put, just on encampment in response as it is, without an emphasis on housing, runs up to over $500 per person per month. That's the cost of the status quo. What if those same resources were additional rent supplements? Ignoring this data, several communities have entered into the space of safer camping zones or temporary structures. Again, program effectiveness and cost effectiveness have to be shared. In British Columbia, where there are more safer camping zones or sanctioned encampments, often in parks, it has been reported that staffing, security, and infrastructure costs exceed $1 million per encampment per year. In Hawaii, where other accounting has been done, while the costs were less, they still came up to $25,000 per person per encampment per year. And that was with some in-kind supports. That's over $2,000 per person per month in a sanctioned encampment. Imagine how that money could be reinvested elsewhere. And so to bring my comments to a close, knowing that I've run out of time, we have to continue to put housing at the forefront of all of our decisions, evidence-based and evidence-informed practices at the decisions. And we have to ensure that people experiencing homelessness are empowered to be co-producers of the future that they want at the individual service planning level. Thank you for your time today and the opportunity to share my thoughts and remarks.
Thanks so much, Ian. We'll go to Councilor Jaworski first.
Thanks very much through the chair to Ian. Thank you very much for your presentation. One, uh, point that's, uh, I'd like to cover is anecdotally, I, I seem to hear a lot about addiction issues and, and homelessness and help, trying to help people afflicted by these addictions move along the housing continuum and, uh, and into stable housing. I wonder if you have experience in that and could speak to that because it really seems that that's part and parcel for some people to, to help them along and to find that, uh, that housing first solution.
Through the chair, uh, thank you for the question. I think that we need to acknowledge that, uh, people with substance use disorders do exist within the homeless population and that proportionally speaking, we're greater, there's a greater likely we'll see a substance use disorder within people experiencing chronic homelessness. At the same time, we need to also acknowledge that most Canadians with the substance use disorder are housed, are stably housed, and will stay housed for the rest of their lives. Sobriety is not a precondition for housing success. The successful variables that we look at in supporting people in housing really comes down to the sort of things that were talked about in the first delegation, which is using evidence-based approaches to providing supports so that even if they are living with addiction, they can be successfully supported in looking at a continuum of options to support both their housing needs and their health needs associated with their use of substances.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Chair Redmond.
Ian, I too want to thank you for your presentation and the clarity of your message. Clearly, you heard Nelson earlier talk about subsidies being one of the solutions. And I really liked the way you put that if we're talking about homelessness and not talking about solutions, we're having the wrong conversation. I've heard the stats that you've offered, which actually aren't shocking, but somewhat discouraging about, uh, encampments and the fact that they cost a lot and they don't lead to necessarily a solution. Can you just comment on the, um, thought of whether rent subsidy is a viable solution that needs to be pursued?
Thank you for the question again through the chair. I, I would offer that rental subsidies definitely have to be part of the offer. I would say that, uh, we need to look at the individual economic circumstances of each person. But in particular, we can start to prioritize those individuals experiencing homelessness that have the greatest financial barriers to housing access and take a very targeted approach to subsidy moving forward. So in an ideal world, I would love to see subsidy available for any person experiencing homelessness. In a very pragmatic current state of affairs, I'd love to see rent subsidies, uh, at least targeted to those individuals for whom without the access to the rent subsidy and support, there will be tremendous hardship in helping them find and access housing, which is still going to be the majority of people. But we need to take an approach that is very much, uh, looks at the unique characteristics and presenting needs and strengths of each person and build an approach to help them exit homelessness that's based upon his or their specific needs. So yes, rent subsidies, more, the better. The only solution, no.
Thank you so much for your comments and for addressing my question.
Thank you, Ian. I am now looking for Martin Asling, co-founder of Waterloo Region Yes in My Backyard. There you are, Martin, welcome. How are you?
I, I am good, thank you. I am avoiding the, uh, the, the building sounds. Uh, my building is being worked. I hope this is a, um, you're still able to hear me. So first of all, I, I'd just like to thank everyone. I'd like to thank Regional Council and I'd like to thank Regional for, for writing this report. I, um, and particularly to the, to the Regional Councilors who have been asking some of the important and difficult questions in response to the previous delegates. I, I'll start by saying that I agree with everything that's been said so far, both in the report and delegations in support of Housing First. I only caution that it should not be used to enable a, a, a type of NIMBYist opposition to second or third-best options when such opposition does not actually get us closer to Housing First. We see this type of NIMBYism in some of the opposition to A Better Tent City, where community members have come together to create a grassroots, uh, imperfect, but imperfect solution, but still very important and, you know, transformative, um, program. But, but, but a primary challenge is simply finding a place where a local municipality will allow them in light of such opposition by some neighbors. We currently have a collection of very good Housing First programs, but I wouldn't say we yet have what I would call a Housing First policy. If we did, we would have ended homelessness. Housing First is about removing barriers to housing so that people don't have to jump through hoops to prove to us that they are ready for housing. When we have a shortage of affordable housing, we are effectively making people jump through such hoops, such as our housing waitlist. And I, I make that distinction to help clarify why formally allowing or sanctioning encampments or supporting A Better Tent City is not contrary to either a Housing First program or a policy. First, um, as a program, sanctioning encampments does not impede on any Housing First program. If anything, it makes Housing First programs more likely to succeed. Because a key part of any successful Housing First program for people experiencing homelessness is a strong relationship between the program participant and their social supports. As the report, the staff report points out, when encampments are disconnected from the system to end homelessness, there is no intentional pathway out of homelessness for those leaving there. This is a key reason why we support formally allowing and sanctioning encampments because if we break up or remove or, uh, so-called sweep encampments, we are breaking trust and thereby disconnecting encampment residents from the system to end homelessness. We should really consider that to many, and as you're probably well aware, to many Waterloo Region residents, including this region's unsheltered residents, there is effectively one system and one government. So, you know, one arm doing one thing while another doing another, it, um, it, it can still break trust regardless. Similarly, formally, formally allowing or sanctioning encampments is not mutually exclusive to the goal of a Housing First policy. If we, however, if we truly had a Housing First policy as described above, we would no longer need encampments and there would be no need to sweep them. It would, it would simply be that, uh, that people would not be, be living in encampments because other options were available for them. The, the report asks the question, is Housing First the most effective framework for ending homelessness? To us, to Waterloo Region Yes in My Backyard and others that have advocated for formally allowing encampments and for facilitating programs such as A Better Tent City, this has never been really the point of contention. If anything, the case for Housing First has been underappreciated by all levels of government, including the region. Again, as evidenced by the continued existing, existence of homelessness. I, I hope that, uh, council takes in the insights from the Housing First subject matter experts who we've heard from today alongside myself so that you can continue to fund and also expand Housing First programs so that we can meet the ideal of a Housing First policy in end homelessness. The, the, the key part of the report that I'd like to comment on is the, the question, do encampments prolong homelessness? And which encampment response is best to, for efforts to end homelessness? Because I think that's key to what we're, what we're discussing here about how, how do we treat encampments? The authors write that while there is insufficient rigorous data available to support a conclusion that encampments either prolong or resolve homelessness, they also, the authors also find, uh, you know, with the best available evidence, and I quote, "With no other viable housing options, encampments can provide some interim stability when there is tacit or sanctioned support to prevent people from living rough." This aligns with Housing First principles in the case that alternative housing is unavailable and discourages sweeping and/or criminalizing encampments. We agree with that assessment and I would add that the scenario they outline, where we do not provide enough alternative housing to encampments, is the current reality. Even if we did accept the premise that all the housing that people need exists and people are simply choosing not to make use of it, we would then have to ask why that is. As the previous August staff report and many other accounts have shown, people do not always feel safe in alternative settings, particularly the current existing alternatives such as shelters. If safe housing does exist, we need to build trust for people to go to such housing. And such trust is again broken when we criminalize and particularly break up encampments. I would also add that the report's admission that there is not perfect evidence one way or another. I think as, you know, good practice for anyone dealing with the, you know, uncertainties in any kind of, you know, social science. It should not discourage us from acting on the best available evidence. The report goes on to note that Housing First programs are preferable and we of course agree. However, far from being mutually exclusive, allowing or sanctioning encampments is an important part of respecting the dignity of Waterloo Region's unsheltered population and towards facilitating a more cooperative relationship between encampment residents and staff that might be able to support them, ideally within a Housing First program. If allowing encampments has a cost attached to it, this depends on which model we use or how we, how we think about this. This would be no more contrary to Housing First than the necessary existence of shelters which the region also supports. And that's in recognition that we have not yet ended homelessness. Now, I agree with, um, the, the points brought up about the relative costs and that's just one more argument in favor of truly ending homelessness.
Okay, Martin, Martin, I'm going to have to stop you there. You've gone well over the time. And I do, I do appreciate that it is a very important topic for discussion. I, I would like to make sure that councillors get to vet in because I'm sure they have some questions of you. So if you'll...
I, I understand and I apologize for going over time. I have, I, I just had one last paragraph where I was just going to just ask, just, uh, just clarify what we're asking specifically for, if that's okay. So we ask that the region formally allow encampments to explicitly prevent counterproductive and dehumanizing sweeps of encampments as a complement to the region's Housing First program. Similarly, we ask the region to do whatever possible to support already existing programs such as A Better Tent City. One such option would be to deem A Better Tent City a public service to prevent or zoning being used in, inappropriately used to prevent A Better Tent City from being present in a neighborhood based on fears of the residents themselves. And that would be an example of people zoning if that were explicitly, um, the, the purpose of such zoning. We also will be reaching and other levels of government to continue to support such programs and to, uh, Housing First programs and to expand them so that we fully address the need in our community and so that we can truly say the region has a Housing First overall strategy or policy. Uh, thank you for your time. I apologize for going over. Thank you for the additional, uh, time. Thank you.
You're welcome, Martin. Okay, and so Councilor Verbanovic, you are up.
Thank you very much and thanks, Martin, for, uh, for coming in today and, uh, and for the work that you and others continue to do as part of YIMBY. Obviously, in terms of, um, you know, what you're advocating, it's, it's, it's pretty clear that your, your organization is, is supportive of, um, the, the notion of housing as a, as a human right. My, my question to you, just so that we're being explicitly clear here, is you're saying that, um, you know, looking at Housing First as a model is unequivocally, you know, the, the ultimate end goal that we, we should be striving for. But in the meantime, recognizing that, you know, we can't achieve that overnight. There, because of the severity of the problem, there are, um, there are other issues that we should be, be looking at as, as interim solutions. And in fact, this may be an opportunity, uh, for us to, to, to learn from and, and study from those, uh, other options like ABTC and others. Is that correct?
I, I would say that I, I want to be very careful to not put the two in, in opposition to each other. I think that we, um, perhaps not overnight in terms of the funding, but I think we definitely can end homelessness through Housing First programs. But we also have to recognize that that's not, uh, that's not what we're doing right now. We do have a lot of really important programs, Housing First programs. We, we still have homelessness and we have a duty to support people as, as much as possible. I, you know, we still have shelters. Shelters aren't, they're, they're not Housing First, but it's very important that we still have shelters. And, you know, if Finland was mentioned, uh, you know, one, one thing that has happened in Finland because they are making much greater strides towards that Housing First policy ideal, you know, they, they, they have a situation where, you know, a lot of shelters are being reconfigured as, um, as, as permanent housing. And they're able to do that because they're addressing the problem. It would be a mistake to, you know, shut down shelters, for example, or negate models like A Better Tent City or, um, you know, criminalize encampments. negate models like a Better Tent City or, you know, criminalize encampments because we want to have Housing First. We need to recognize that we're not there, and, you know, I wouldn't frame that as that we can't get there. I think we definitely can and we need to, but part of that is, you know, the way to, if Housing First truly works, and I believe it does, then it will render encampments and even shelters unnecessary. But that, you know, we shouldn't shut them down or criminalize encampments because theoretically we think we're there. Housing First works, then they will become unnecessary. People won't be in encampments. People won't be going to shelters. Maybe there'll just be a few kind of very kind of one-off cases, but fundamentally, people will have housing and they'll be able to be given housing very rapidly because we have enough housing available for people to rapidly move into.
Oh, and thank you for that, because I mean, I hundred percent agree with you. I guess my point that I was seeking clarity on was that while, you know, recognizing that we're not going to get from here to there, you know, tomorrow or in the next week or in the next month, there's a journey that needs to take place. You were very explicitly saying that we need to leave some of these other options on the table. While we work towards that Housing First priority in as quickly as possible, and we need to to make it more of a priority is what I think I hear you saying.
Yes, I think ultimately, and I understand the concerns of people, and that's kind of based on the idea of, you know, scarcity of funding, but I think ultimately, you need to do is just recognize the importance of having a Housing First strategy overall and the importance of supporting people where they are currently at. Means more funding, that means a greater investment, but it also means, you know, when it comes to encampments, formally allowing it so that we can build that better relationship and supporting things like a Better Tent City where it might just be a matter of, you know, there's already community support for it. But there also needs to be, you know, something to, to make it, you know, allowable. And the Woolwich Staff Report talked about, you know, declaring it a public service, which I think makes sense. Because it, everyone benefits when people are housed and out of homelessness. It has those ripple effects in the community that we've kind of heard from, from the other delegates. So I think there are measures available to, to help people right now, even if all the funding isn't, isn't there yet. Although that funding should be there.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Chair Redman.
Thank you, Chair Jawett. And Martin, thank you very much for your presentation. If I look at the Housing First staff report, I'm going to say right off the top that there's insufficient rigorous data available to support the conclusion that encampments either prolong or resolve homelessness. So I'm going to sort of put that on the table, and if you think this is an unfair question, just let me know. One of the things that I struggle with, with a Better Tent City, and it's just one of many encampments around the region. And I would agree with you that the more affordable housing and the greater supply we have, it will help address this. But if I look at these and consider them a stopgap, I struggle with, how do we know if they're successful? Shelters are looked at as temporary. I would assume that encampments are looked as temporary, and if there was supportive housing available and affordable housing, people would move to that. So have you turned your thoughts, because I really struggle with, how do we measure whether this is successful or this is a group of people that have decided that this will be their permanent residence because it's all about relationships, and I get that so many services and social services are built on relationships. But how can we analyze whether or not this is truly a stopgap in helping people through this progression, given that we do have to have more affordable and supportive housing?
Thank you, councillor Red. I hope that I am able to fully answer your question. I may have missed part of it, so if I don't fully answer, please do let me know. To begin with, I I wouldn't exactly characterize a Better Tent City as an encampment, it's not exactly the same, right? I think it is a better option than an encampment. You know, people do have a roof over their heads. I mean, it, you know, it's worth comparing that to, you know, a larger apartment or home on their own, for sure, but I think it is also distinct from, you know, a tent, for example. So I, as far as I think the question, when you're talking about the part of the staff report, which I also cited, saying that there's insufficient rigorous data available to support a conclusion that they either prolong or resolve homelessness. I think as, as public servants, it's important to engage in evidence-based policy, but I think what that actually means in practice is the best available evidence-based policy. If something doesn't have perfect evidence one way or the other, it doesn't mean that you have the luxury of ignoring the question entirely, of course, right? So, and I think part of building evidence-based policy is, you know, you can't simply do what's already been tried in principle. Like, I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, with Housing First, we already know what works. So I'm not suggesting that we should do anything other than Housing First. But when, but in general, I don't think we should discourage you, a council, from trying new things as well, because that's how you develop a broader evidence base. That's how you figure out what other things might work. And again, like I said to Mayor Verbanovic, you know, this may be a stopgap. We support Housing First. But in the meantime, we need to also support people where they're at and where, ultimately, to be quite frank, where we're leaving them. Because, because we're not fully funding a Housing First policy. As far as it being, something being a Band-Aid, you know, I think that metaphor is actually pretty useful, you know. A Band-Aid doesn't resolve the problem, but I don't think anyone would, you know, if your kid scrapes their knee, you're not going to say, I'm not going to give you a Band-Aid, because that doesn't resolve the problem of, you know, why you fell in the first place, right? You still, a Band-Aid is still necessary if you don't have the solution directly in front of you. And what I mean by that is, we're not currently funding Housing First adequately. Not that we don't know what the solution is. So, in the meantime, I think it is important to, you know, we have, you know, the new regional budget coming, and of course, we'll, you and I will probably both be advocating to higher levels of government as well. But right now, there are tangible things that you can do that would still make some difference and be very important. Based on, you know, the best kind of evidence and reasoning that we can currently use.
So, Martin, I really appreciate that, and there probably is no just one cogent answer to this. When I think of phase one of the pandemic, and I look at our shelter system, and we're all going to acknowledge that it's temporary. Eighty people were housed who were homeless when they went into the pandemic. So to me, that is evidence that as much as we don't have a perfect system, it's working. So when I look at encampments, and I would acknowledge that a Better Tent City has a bit of a different model, but they're not the only people who are living rough in our region. There are many encampments. I would tell you that if we could, if it could be demonstrated to me that they're moving into supportive or affordable housing, to me, that would say that this is a successful stopgap model. So that was really the gist of my question, is how would we measure whether or not this model is working?
Well, first of all, I just want to be clear. I don't think that it's working in the sense that, you know, the, the unsheltered encampments, when you're talking about tents and people simply living rough, it's not working. My, my point is that formally allowing encampments is more likely to do more good than harm than the alternative to that, which is to not formally allow encampments. Those are the two things that we're, that we're discussing when it comes to encampments. There's, there's certainly no one that will tell you that encampments are even a good stopgap. The question is, is it important to formally allow them because, you know, the possibility of things like criminalizing encampments does much more harm than good. That's my position, and that's where, you know, the, you know, the, you know, the, the report, you know, touches on some of the reasons why it would not be a good idea to criminalize encampments, and I know a lot of, and I would certainly agree with that, and I think that part of that comes from my own experience working, working in a shelter, where there were a lot of people, whether they were, you know, maybe they were living, living rough, and then they come to the shelter after, after a long time. It can take a while to build the type of, not just trust, but also just kind of information on, you know, how can we as staff best help them find housing? What are their needs? And, but that relationship is also really important. So understanding, I look at all the evidence in support of any of the programs that the region supports that involves, you know, staff building relationships with people. And how important that is for helping them find housing. You know, the, you know, the Shelters to Home Support Program, you know, I've, I've seen the, you know, the workers in that program operate and the important work that they do. And just consider what happens with that, and it's very difficult to build that trust, you know. There are people that you think would never interact with staff or trust staff to even just have a conversation with them. You know, eventually that trust is built, right? But it's not easy. Imagine what happens to that trust if, if you're, if you're in an encampment, if you're in a tent, if you're being, whether it's ticketed, whether or not people are, if you're seeing in any way whatsoever that the government, you know, and I think people see the government as one big government, right? If you see the government as trying to just push you aside by breaking up your encampment or even just by, you know, bothering you, what that does to that trust? And we have so much evidence on, you know, the the Shelters to Home Support Program and how important it is to have those relationships. What do you think breaking up an encampment does to that trust? I think it's important to allow, formally allow encampments to prevent that type of breach of trust. But then, the majority of the work is still in front of you, right? As far as even coming up with a good stopgap, let alone a solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Clark.
Sorry, having some trouble with my unmute button. I think not so much a question, but some sort of general comments. I think that, just for clarity, there's nothing in the staff report about closing down or sweeping or outlawing encampments. And I don't think that's anything that we've ever discussed. Not in the context of where we are now and not in the past. It's certainly not been our practice. But there's a lot of space between banning something, shutting it down, allowing it to operate sort of tacitly, supporting it, maybe financially and directly delivering it. And I think what staff report talks to, and I certainly support it, is what's going to happen at this end in terms of what we are directly involved as a region in doing and in delivering. This whole discussion takes me back to 2014 and 2015, when we were faced with the closure of the church-based Out of the Cold Alternative Shelter System. And then we were hearing from advocates, as we are now, who said absolutely correctly that some people preferred the community-based alternative system to the region's formal shelter one. And so it should be supported to continue. And then we also grappled with what council's role should be, and in the end, council decided back then that its role as a service manager for homelessness needed to be the provision of services that were housing-focused and that worked to end people's homelessness, and not the provision of services that perpetuated people's homelessness. Because the Out of the Cold shelters had no expectation that their guests would ever become permanently housed, they saw the same people coming back to them still homeless year after year. And that realization was, for many of them who spoke to me, one of the reasons that the churches ended the system. And it was the region, it was the reason that regional council at the time decided that stepping in to keep the alternative system going was not the region's role. We've heard from a lot of speakers today about the Housing First approach to homelessness, and that approach has been successful, as Chair Redman mentioned. And as we see in some of the staff reports today, so far, the formal system has housed about 250 homeless individuals and families. And that includes people who are chronically homeless. So I think that our job as regional council isn't to make homelessness more comfortable for people, but to end it. And our proper job is to ensure that there are housing-focused services and ultimately permanent housing for everybody who needs them. So just for clarity, I haven't heard any discussion of closing down or sweeping encampments of any sort. If that, if that discussion is happening, I haven't been party to it.
Thank you for your comments. May I respond since there was some suggestion of what I was saying in my delegation? Okay, yeah, first of all, the reason why I bring up formally sanctioning encampments, that was part of the discussion of both the August report and this current report, where, where I cited them in agreement when the staff report says, with no other viable housing options, which is still the case for some people, encampments can provide some interim stability when there is tacit or sanctioned support to prevent people from sleeping rough. They say, this aligns with Housing First principles in the case that alternative housing is unavailable, and, I emphasize, discourages sweeping and/or criminalizing encampments. So the report that I'm responding to is, and I'm agreeing with the report in their assessment that formally allowing encampments can discourage sweeping and/or criminalizing encampments. So that's why I bring that up. I would also say that if it is the case that there has been no, that no one at the region or municipal or smaller tier municipal level, because I think that, you know, by, I'm not simply suggesting, well, I didn't make one suggestion one way or the other, but I would also say that whether it's at the regional or municipal level, formally allowing encampments can, according to the staff report that I'm discussing, can discourage sweeping and/or criminalizing encampments, and I think that's important. If it's not a problem at all, then it should be not a problem to formally recognize and to formally allow encampments. Teresa, respond to another point that you made. Let me just make sure I have this right. So, I, I'm not sure what you mean by making homelessness comfortable. I think that very clearly homelessness is not comfortable at all, but one thing that formally allowing an encampment or having kind of supports for people that are in encampments might give them some very small marginal amount of comfort that might make it easier for them to be in a place where they can access housing. And I think a big part of that is, is the trust that I've, that I've talked about. I also worked in a shelter, and I was kind of around when a Better Tent, when, excuse me, when excuse me, when the Out of the Cold programs were around. And, you know, there was, you know, there were a lot of reasons why they were shut down, and one of the reasons was that, yes, they did want to encourage and put pressure on, what I saw, on other levels of government to actually, you know, fully resolve the homelessness crisis so that they would be unnecessary. the homelessness crisis so that they would be unnecessary. What I recall kind of being in a shelter, sorry, working at a shelter, is that, you know, a better tent, sorry, what was the, out-of-the-cold programs were very important because they were an alternative to, you know, to being on the street. And that can be a matter of, of life and death for people. That's why it was so important. And that's why having that extra little, little bit of comfort, whether it means, you know, that, you know, people are secure that their, that their homes won't be swept, whether it's that there is more, more support from, from staff, that can make a big difference. I don't think that that's perpetuating homelessness. I think that the lack of funding to truly have a, a Housing First policy to end homelessness, that's what's perpetuating homelessness. You know, formally allowing encampments, programs like a better tent city, which can make a big difference in people's lives, that's not perpetuating homelessness. That's, that's making things better for people.
Okay, so Martin, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. We've been at this with you for about 35 minutes, and I'm a bit concerned because we do have some other delegates who have some important messaging as well. So if-
Chair, can I just, can I just clarify? Because I, I don't want to be taken the wrong way as if I'm suggesting we should make homelessness uncomfortable. But I've been in this business for over 20 years. And prior to Housing First, we spent a lot of energy and money on things like making sure that we had warm sleeping bags for people, or that, you know, that we had, we had, you know, nicer decorations in the shelter. So, you know, our focus back then was on, not on stopping people from being homeless, but from making their homelessness less lethal, or, or more comfortable. And I'm not, again, I'm not suggesting that we should make it uncomfortable. I'm just suggesting we have a better solution than, than making sure people have warm sleeping bags or, or socks.
Okay, thanks for that, Elizabeth. And we'll move over to Counselor Urb.
Thanks, Chair. In the interest of time, thanks to, to Martin, and Jeff, and Marie, and Ian for your presentations. I, I just simply say this, that we're, we're working hard at trying to make housing first the priority in the region, and creating safe supportive housing units for the people who are most vulnerable and needing it. And for me, the primary concern, people living in encampments, or in other alternative housing, is that the first priority is for their safety, and for their well-being, and for that of the community. And so as we look at the different kinds of ways that, that people choose to live, who are living rough, or who are homeless, that, that their safety and their well-being, for me, is a priority. And that may affect some of the decisions that we have to make.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Urb. Okay, and so that being said, we are looking for a mover and a seconder. And the recommendation is that I won't read it to you. I see Counselor Foxton seconded by, is that yourself? Counselor Verbanovic, would you second that?
I will second it, but I also have some amendments, and I also have some questions of staff.
Okay, so, I guess now is as good a time as any. Counselor Verbanovic? So it's on the table, and it's seconded, but you're looking to make a friendly amendment? Is that, am I-
Well, I'll be making, I'll, I'll be making some amendments. I don't know that it's, I don't know if it's friendly or not. But I, I do want to first share some photos with, with council and, and staff, and also ask some, some questions. And if I can ask the clerk, perhaps, to, to share the photos on the screen. Because I think when we're talking about homelessness, it's important that we understand, and I know we all sort of have a sense of, you know, what these encampments might look like. Some of us may experience them firsthand. But these are actual pictures from one of the municipalities in our, in our region, in the case of the city of Kitchener, all taken this year, all taken throughout the community, some along the river, some in other forested areas around, around the city, as, you know, staff get calls and complaints and, and have to respond to them. But I, I think as we, as we continue to go along, these, as I pointed out, are all different rural areas. And they obviously create challenges in terms of the, the surrounding environment, toilet facilities, needles, garbage, and, and so on. So I think we need to be aware of that when we look at our commit, commitment. But I think it's also important to recognize that this also happens in our urban environments. So these last four pictures have all been taken since the, the closure of the, the backup overflow shelter at St. Mark's. And that last one, actually, that last photo that you saw there, is on the on-ramp at Fairway Road going onto Highway Eight. So as you can appreciate, not exactly a safe situation for, 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 not that any of these are. But I think as we look at, you know, what the breadth of the problem is, this, these are Kitchener-specific photos, but these are reality. You know, Counselor McGary has talked about them in the past, others have talked about them along our, our, our riverfront, and in our communities that, that we're with. And so my, my question to, to, to staff, as we, as we look at this report, and, and I want to be absolutely 100% clear so that there's no question, I'm 100% supportive of Housing First as the ultimate goal of, of where we want to be. The question, obviously, is, you know, the journey from here to getting to where we need to be, and how we best serve those populations in the, in the meantime. And so my, my question to staff is, as I go back to our, our motion, that, that council unanimously adopted, both with respect to a Better Tent City, but also to alternatives to our shelter system as people are working their way through to Housing First. I'm just wondering where that piece gets dealt with here. Because it seems to be, it, it seems to be missing in the report from my perspective.
So I would look for a response to that. Mr. Lochner, do you want to head that off? Are you feeling, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, great question. And I'll turn to Mr. Pettipier to, to add more details. Staff are in a very similar position to the individuals that we heard today. We had some experts say that, you know, I think I heard from, from most, that Housing First is the goal, and various views on supports for encampments, or ranges of, of shelters. So staff haven't been able to find any evidence that suggests anything different than Ian, as an example, suggested. It's not to say that, that, that may not come about. I'd ask Mr. Pettipier if I could, Madam Chair, to add more detail on, on specifics of what I just said.
Thank you for that, Bruce. Ryan, could you give us a little, little bit deeper dive in that, please?
Sure. And through you, Madam Chair, part of what staff have undertaken over the last month is our point-in-time count for this year. So part of coming back to the motion that was put forward in August was to analyze that data and come forward and bring specific recommendations for alternatives to the existing emergency shelter system. So based on what we've heard and seen, and through the point-in-time count, that's part of our report that will come back in November, on, on analyzing the gaps and what can be done about them in terms of alternatives. So that's, that's some additional work that is forthcoming.
And so in, in terms of that additional work, Mr. Pettipier, is it those numbers that are going to speak to the, the depth of the homelessness crisis as, as it exists in, in our community right now? Because, I mean, we, you know, notionally, from the work that we did in, in, in Kitchener alone, and, and I know you were part of that working group, I mean, the, the numbers would suggest that, that they're much higher than, you know, the last set of numbers. And I think one of the delegations referenced 248 and 356. You know, notionally, they are, are significantly higher, based on, you know, all of the experiences that we have. And so will that then shape staff recommendations for next steps that potentially will, will come forward in, in, you know, with respect to our 2022 budget?
Through you, Madam Chair, you're correct, Counselor. So those numbers will further inform our approaches to dealing with the homelessness situation across the region. That, it goes back to Marie Morrison's point about having a data-informed strategy. This is a, an in-depth look at our current state, both from a numbers perspective, but also diving in further to individual stories. So not only are we just counting people, but we all are also surveying their individual situations, and trying to get a handle on what it is that they need specifically in order to exit homelessness. So we're doing that on an individual basis. So not only will we have a roll-up of numbers, but we'll be able to analyze what, what and where our system can improve to get, to get people housed as quickly and as effectively as possible.
Okay. Mr. Pettipier, as we look, as we think about the numbers, as we knew them to be, and, and as I said, but, you know, I think we're, we all suspect that they're higher now, do we sort of have a sense of what is the, the soonest period when we can, you know, if, even if everything was ideal, and all the funding flowed and everything, that we could actually get people into a, into a Housing First approach with, with the necessary supports? Like, if, if all the stars aligned, what's the quickest that we could do that, do we think? Based on the numbers that we know?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's a very complex and complicated question to answer, Counselor. I do appreciate, I do appreciate it. What I will say is that we've seen significant progress with federal programs like the Rapid Housing Initiative. And when those builds are completed in about a 12-month span, from beginning of funding to, to end, and we'll see those, several of those projects come online later this year, that's going to put a significant dent in our chronic homelessness numbers as we know them to exist. It'll continue to be a question that we answer based on data. We'll need to continue to look back and monitor what our situation is, and the number of people that are getting housed, but are also coming in to a state of homelessness over time. We can deal with the number of homeless individuals that we have right now. As I mentioned, we'll have a better handle on what exactly that number is for the November cycle. But what we can't necessarily put, put our thumb on, is the number of people that will enter into a state of homelessness in, in the future. That's based on so many complicated factors beyond social services that get into the economic condition, as well as funding from, uh, upper tiers of, of government as well. So I, I, I'm not able to give you a better answer than that, other than we've seen some promising practices over the last year, and, and in particular, the Rapid Housing Program as one that can make a significant difference in eliminating chronic homelessness.
Barry, can I just hold you there for a second? Bruce has been wanting to vet in for a couple of minutes.
Yep.
Oh, did you, I'm sorry. Did you have anything else you wanted down to that? We're good? Okay. Apologize, Ryan did cover what Bruce wanted to, to put in there. So that being, that being said, we are on, on a bit of a clock here. Can I come back, Mayor Verbanovic, to some of the adjustments that, that you are, are looking to put forward here, and let some other speakers get done here? Because I've seen people's hands go up and go back down, and go up and go back down. So I think, I, I think I want to make sure I'm giving it a good balance here. So go ahead, Counselor Shont.
Sure. Okay, I'll come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm glad, Ryan, that you confirmed sort of what the pit will include. I think my observation in listening to all of the delegates was that, you know, the region, we provide, we provide housing, we provide dollars, and we provide social support. And I, I think a key to solving the issue of homelessness is understanding why people are homeless. And so I'm looking forward to the report in November, that will, I, I'm assuming will bring those pieces together, and then we can figure out how the region can support them. I, I, I fully support that Housing First premise. And, and, and so I think I, I support the recommendation. I'm a little bit concerned about the, the encampment piece, and how we deal with that, because that, that is an issue, even though it's not fitting into our Housing First piece. We, we, we need to be able to have people trust the system before we can solve that piece of the puzzle. I'm not sure if, if that was articulate enough, but that's where I was going. My question was going to be to Ryan, but he already answered it. So thank you.
Right. Thank you very much, Counselor Shont. Counselor Galway?
All I really wanted to do was suggest an additional part of the recommendation. First of all, I do support the, the staff report and the Housing First strategy, so that, make that perfectly clear. But I do think we have to recognize that, in large part, the, the resourcing that's required to, to do this work comes from the senior levels of government. So my addition to the, the motion would be to simply have this report circulated to the area MPPs and MPs for their, for their information, as well as to AMO and the FCM, for advocacy work in regards to, to this particular issue. So I, I think that's a friendly amendment, just to add that the report is circulated to those individuals and agencies.
Oh, and I, I appreciate that, Counselor Galway. And I will, if you, if you don't mind, take an opportunity to just quickly vet in here before we get to some of the amendments that I, I think that Counselor Verbanovic is looking to put forward. So we've seen this moving target for so long, and there were lessons learned in, in COVID for sure, you know. And of course, if you look at the last 18 months, our whole community has looked entirely different, the number, the density on our streets. However, I'm very encouraged to hear that we're looking at the acuity measure of our homeless population, because, well, we've been asking for that for a long time. And I'm glad that we're, we're going to reengage in that particular measure. The other really important factor here is, we don't like saying it, but it's a reality. We do not have the supportive resources. We just don't. We don't have what we need for our mentally ill, and we don't have what we need for our highly addicted. And I, I think that further perpetuates the challenges in our community for our 630,000 constituents. So I think the way that Elizabeth has articulated the journey we've been on when it comes to supporting our homeless population, has, has had a critical and profound effect on, on my thinking. And I think we need to endeavor to continue to think about what's working and what is not working. And I, again, put out there the concern I have for the divisiveness in our communities between the poverty and the non-poverty, and really investigate how the criminal activity creates this further divide, and the adverse impact it has on, on, on so many others in the community. So we cannot negate the complexities, and we, and we cannot not talk about those other unintended consequences of, of this challenging issue that we work through. So I just wanted to put that on the table as well, while I had an opportunity. And I'll just leave it at that. Again, thanks, Elizabeth, for such wise words. I know it's difficult, but, but it helps me for sure. So, Counselor Verbanovic, please proceed.
Thanks. And I'll just ask my, well, actually, I won't even ask my last question. I'll, I'll add the amendment you have, and then make some comments. And the amendment is that staff bring back with the report in November, the specific recommendations, alternative, alternative options within the region's emergency shelter system, and approximate costing to be considered for the 2022 budget, and that the region work with area- And that the region work with area municipalities to jointly uh research and gather data on the scope of homelessness uh within our region. So that we can, uh, yeah, and that would be the uh, that would be the 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 motion. And if I can, um, Madam Chair, um, I I I do want to thank staff for bringing the report back, because I think it is important um that we uh that we are clear um that what, you know, all of us support is the housing-first approach with wraparound support as the best way to move forward towards a community where everybody has a home. Um, there's no question that affordable and supportive housing options need to be both accessible and sufficiently resourced. And we know with the waiting lists that we have now and the funding uh that we get from our uh provincial and federal partners, while we're making steps in the right direction, we have a long way to go between where we're at now and where we need to be in terms of ending chronic homelessness uh and moving away from some of the temporary uh options that we know uh cause uh cause concern. I think what um, you know, p- part of the problem of this report coming back in the way it 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 has um is it almost feels like we're we're trying to sort of stick with, you know, while housing-first has always been our approach. And it almost, uh, you know, without the, in the absence of the other information that was requested in our August motion, it almost feels like we're leaving today. Um, and particularly with the recommendation, the way it was without the amendment, that we're just sort of continuing with the status quo. And I think that is absolutely the wrong information that we want to get out, and that's why um reaffirming what was in the August motion uh with this uh amendment um is uh is is important. I think uh we know that many residents, particularly uh in our encampments in a better tent city and so on, often don't fit the profile of our typical shelter system client. And finding them offerings within our housing stability syst- takes effort. I mean, it takes effort to find a solution for them. In the meantime, it takes um considerable effort to try to 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 get them to a point, and they will likely be our our last ones that we're able to house. And it and it becomes an issue of resourcing. But I think you'll all agree from the photos that we saw that as a region, we need to do better, and we need to work together with all of our partners, including um, the 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 lower-tier municipalities um to 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 tackle these issues. Um, I believe that the region of Waterloo has a unique ability to 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 really play a leadership role. You know, as we talk about being a world-class community in terms of housing as a human rights strategy. And uh I know that uh we're capable of it. I know we can achieve it. And uh I am certainly hopeful that um both uh this council and uh and our staff and community partners can work uh towards that. But it means that we need to do things differently, and it needs, and it means that we're going to need to invest additional dollars in this area.
Uh, so Counselor Verbanovic, they've asked it that you um.
Yeah, I'm gonna fire that off to clerks right now.
Okay. All right. So Counselor McGarry, you're up.
And thank you through you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of comments and not specific at the amendment that Counselor Verbanovic has uh brought forward, but I didn't want to lose sight of the fact that although encampments are there as a necessary uh shelter for some in our community, I don't want to lose sight that there are some residents and businesses that have real issues at times with increased ti- crime break-ins in their in their residence and in their businesses, uh theft of property. And that in itself can be traumatizing to families. It increases their feeling of vulnerability when it comes to safety. And although encampments, as I said, are seem to be a a necessary thing at the moment, where they're sighted and who's in that particular encampment uh does cause real issues. And I don't want to lose sight of the effects on the rest of our community. Um, and I also didn't want to lose sight of the fact that um the Rapid Housing Initiative is a a great initiative. However, it does have a real-time construct that can disadvantage some of our area municipalities in taking advantage of the funding to try try and provide more affordable housing in their area. And it's it's due, in fact, that uh some of our area municipalities may have appropriate land, but they're not zoned appropriately. And this particular program doesn't allow the time to get appropriate zoning in place before the uh the funds have to be uh spent. So in looking at the discussion before us, I'm hoping to see uh Counselor Vermanovich's um amendment just maybe up on the screen or emailed to us before I can uh sort of decide whether I'm going to support it or not. But I appreciate the discussion this morning. Thank you.
So we'd, uh, from what I understand, Counselor McGarry, it is coming to us, and we are going to be able to put it up on the screen as uh as soon as as um as we can. Okay, so uh i- in the in the interest of of time management, uh, Counselor Verbanovic, we're asking that you uh maybe read it out to everyone while they process it, and we we can get clerks are gonna get it up.
Yep, they should have it. I can read it out again.
Just got it. Just got it. It's coming up now. Okay, how does that look? I don't need to read it, right? Everybody's just kind of perfect. So this is Counselor Verbanovic's amended? Okay, this is the full amended staff recommendation. So amended by uh Counselor Verbanovic. And where's Tom's? I apologize. Not yet. That's next. Yep, okay. So that's it. It's on the uh, it's on the table. Oh, okay. Uh, Counselor Redmond. Proceed.
Thank you, Chair Joud. I guess I would just like to hear um from Counselor Verbanovic, and I'm sorry it's gone down already, which is fine, but just that last sentence, how does working with area municipality staff differ than the pit count? And I guess I'm just really looking for clarity before I'm asked to vote on something. So I don't know if that's a Counselor Verbanovic or a staff or maybe both response, but um I'm not clear on how that deviates from what's currently being done.
So, Chair Redmond, I think, uh, you know, we've all acknowledged that the um the housing issue um while it's primarily under this, a- and the shelter system is uh primarily under the stewardship of the region as the housing services and the shelter services manager. Um, many of us, in in including yourself, have said this is really a community-wide problem that involves everyone. And many of the issues and challenges that we uh that we've dealt with, and you know, I think of um, you know, even the the project up in um in the city of Waterloo that uh Counselors Jaworski uh and uh Herb and Strickland dealt with and 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 others, uh as an example. Um, you know, the more that we work collaboratively together with the lower tiers, um, I think we're going to to achieve uh greater success. On the homelessness issue, um, it's often an issue that municipalities end up dealing with, because um, it's our bylaw officers that end up getting called to uh to to deal with the issue. Um, and so it's really looking at, A, um, how do we strengthen those collaborations to tackle the scope of the problem? And B, um, recognize that, you know, we'll achieve more uh by working uh to together uh in in order to uh to 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 tackle it. Uh, recognizing that there are, you know, many things that I think we can collectively learn uh through this process uh that that can help others. That, you know, I know for that Medicine Hat is often referenced as an example, and, you know, uh by delegations, and why can't we be more like Medicine Hat? Well, part of the reality is Medicine Hat also had housing I to help them uh uh deal with their problem. We don't have that same housing supply uh uh today in our in our region. Um, and so the, you know, tack- tackling the challenges uh is different and is going to require a uh, um, you know, all uh, e- everyone rolling up their sleeves to get there.
So I, and again, I'm not being difficult. I just saw this, and I'm not sort of questioning the merit. I'm trying to figure out what I'm voting on. So um, I'm hearing you say that this would be um involving bylaw staff and um other maybe community partners. And I guess I'm just wondering, um, Madam Chair, through you to staff, is this different, and it may well be, than um how we currently track um housing and homelessness in our communities? I'm assuming that there is collaboration and cooperation now, and that may or may not be to the extent that that Counselor Verbanovic is promoting with this um amendment.
Do we have anyone who can speak to the level of collaboration of data sharing for this? Ryan, are you still there? There you are. Ryan, can you speak to the level of collaboration of data sharing between the area municipalities and the region specifically?
Um, there aren't, uh, uh, thank you for the question, and uh I'll do my best to to clarify through you, Madam Chair. Um, one of the ways that we do try to collaborate uh at at the cross-municipal level is through the municipal leads table, where we talk about um all of these issues and do try to exchange uh data and best practices. One of the efforts coming out of that is trying to create a joint response to encampments um uh as one example. Uh, to Counselor Verbanovic's point, um, you know, the region can decide to uh sanction or tacitly uh uh allow encampments, but it's also, uh, it's ultimately the lower-tiered bylaw that would be responding to them. So these are types of things that do need to have, we do need to uh uh consult with one another in collaboration. Um, as for uh key data uh sharing, uh certainly, uh uh upon request, data is is shared and facilitated. It would be our intent to share the results of the point-in-time count um as well as using it uh for points specific to other community engagement about what's happening with the state of homelessness uh a- across the region. If there are more specific points uh the council would like us to address in collaboration with the lower tiers, um, staff would certainly be willing to 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 entertain those and take those on.
Okay, Counselor Kiefer.
Okay, Madam Chair, and I'll be quick. Uh, um, I uh I see, the only thing I'd like to see changed in the motion is the last word where it says issue in our community. I'd like to see it say issue in our region. If that could be accommodated, I'd be fine with it.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Earp. Uh, you're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm wondering if we could have the first um paragraph of of Counselor Verbanovic's um amendment put on the screen again. Um, where it was talking about specifics, specific um specific recommendations for alternative options. And and so I um, I I just want to be sure that um staff is understanding what that is and what the expectations would be for them to bring back. And I'm not sure if um Counselor Verbanovic wants to expand on that, or if if staff are clear what this says and what information they're supposed to be bringing back to us.
Madam Chair, do you want me to respond?
Yes, please.
Um, so a- again, I mean, I think, you know, part of the uh point in the August motion um was that we know there's going to be um information gleaned uh from the point-in-time count. And part of that recommendation was uh to come back with us to with with recommendations uh around the um, you know, what what we learned. Um, you know, other best practices in in other municipalities, those kinds of things. You know, I I think, and we've even heard this from um, some of the the delegations today. Uh, you know, our our um is has been a similar um, has been a similar system that uh has been in in existence for 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 some time. And the world that we're living in today and the numbers of people that we're dealing with is very different. And so it's really about, you know, getting some recommendations, and quite frankly, getting them in a in a time where we can consider them as part of Budget Twenty Twenty-Two. Um, you know, we we acted quickly at the start of the pandemic uh because we knew we knew we needed to. Um, and while we may not be able to act as quickly, I still think we can act in a timely manner to uh to 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 better the situation for some of the folks that we're dealing with.
Thank you, Counselor Verbanovic. Um, Chair Redmond, did you want to vet in? Jim, are you satisfied, Jim, or?
Um, I don't know if it's fair to ask staff if if they're clear on on what the expectations are that they should be bringing back. I recognize we were able to respond quickly at the beginning of the pandemic, because we had funding the uh upper levels of government, which may not be as forthcoming this time. So um, are are staff feeling comfortable with um with what they're going to be coming back with, or what they've been asked to come back with in November?
Uh, so Ryan, uh, are you, Ryan, are you on the Hollywood Squares? There you go. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for the the clarifying questions, Counselor Earp. Um, not knowing ahead of time what the the data is going to show, um, uh, you know, what we will do is we will take that data and make recommendations to the best of our ability uh to make improvements to the existing system. Um, and those will, of course, uh likely come with some costs if we're talking about uh uh adding on layers of support or or programs uh as well. I can't say that uh for sure, because it might mean an adjustment within the existing system. Um, what I can say based on the the motion and the clarifying questions are that we will look at that data, we will look at what it's telling us, um, and we'll do our best to to put together some recommendations based on what the the data is showing. And we're just cautioned that that uh that will come with some uh some cost projections um as well, that uh would need to be addressed through the budget process. And as a report is indicating, uh uh later on in this agenda, uh, the existing services and supports that we have in place through COVID uh are are significant, and if there are not additional federal or provincial dollars uh uh attached, um, then it's a it's a difficult situation to be in. Um, I I think that's uh, that's his, that's where my clarity is at in regards to the motion right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Chair Redmond, would you?
So just to sort of finish off on Counselor Earp's line of questioning, and again, um, I guess I'm just wondering with specific recommendations, anecdotally, what we have heard is that people want shelters where they um that are dry. People want shelters where um they can bring their animals. People may want shelters where they can be as as a um a couple. So I guess I'm not limiting it to that, but I'm just continuing to um seek clarification, because there's been a lot of discussion when amendments come in um at the last minute that we're all on the same page and we vote. So Counselor Verbanovic, is it fair to say that those are maybe examples, not obviously the only examples, of the kinds of recommendations and the costing that you would be anticipating from your amendments?
I I think it's fair to say those are uh examples, Chair Redmond. And and again, it is uh uh Mr. Pedder, indicated, it's difficult, you know, prior to them actually doing the count and and doing their research and getting that data to know specifically what um you know, what might come out of it. And and ultimately, it'll be up to council then, once, you know, they have that, when staff has that information, and uh and their recommendations to say, great, okay. when staff has that information and their recommendations to say, great, okay, let's move forward, let's nod, or here's, you know, additional work that we want to see pursued.
And I appreciate, I think that clarity is only fair to council as they vote on this and also to staff when they try to implement it. So appreciate that clarity.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to look for a second. Now, do we need the motion back on the screen? Is everybody okay, or? Do you want me to put it back on? Just kind of looking at nods here. Would you rather see it again? Are we good? Okay. So there it is before you. I need a second for the amended staff recommendation. Oh, I can't, no, I can't see. Sorry, you guys. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilor Strickland. All right, I am going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Much appreciated, everybody's, everybody's discussion and patience today. Right. We're now going to entertain the friendly amendment from Councilor Galway. So do we need to put that up again? Right, right. To share with MPPs, so MPs and MPs, so other levels of government. So I'm looking for someone to second Councilor Galway's motion. Thank you, Councilor Clark. I'm going to ask the question, hold, I'm going to get the question done here. All those in favor? And that is also carried. Thank you. Here we are. So we are, we're just at that pivotal time. It's 12:28. So would I suggest that we take our lunch break now? Would it be reasonable to? Yep. Okay. It looks like everyone's nodding their head. So that's a good sign. Okay. One o'clock is the, one o'clock is good? And we have delegation. So don't go too far. See you guys at one.
We are still on. Okay, we're ready to go. Everyone's coming in nicely. Okay, so welcome back, everybody. I hope you had a nice lunch. Thanks staff for getting us lunch. It was really lovely. I got to eat Bruce's salad. I don't know what he ate. Okay, so item 4.3, JRT Mobility Plus Service Review Implementation, and we have some delegations. So I'm going to bring on our first delegation who's been waiting patiently, Anthony Tirani. Oh goodness, did I do that right?
You did it very well.
Okay, thank you. Executive Director for the Kidney Foundation of Canada and Terry Young, board member. Welcome to you both. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to present this afternoon. Terry will actually be carrying the ball for us. Terry's actually the current Chair of our Government Relations Committee. He's past President of the Ontario Branch, a former National Board Member, a former dialysis patient, and is celebrating his 48th year of a transplant, a kidney transplant, which is almost unheard of. I would like to say that he spent most of his life advocating on behalf of patients and families, and he's here today to do just that with respect to the Mobility Plus recommendations. So I'll just turn it over to Terry.
Thanks, thanks Anthony. And I was hoping to say good morning, Madam Chair, but I'll settle for good afternoon.
Apologize.
And lots of discussion this morning, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here on behalf of the Kidney Foundation. I'm actually sorry I have to be here, given the recommendation that's before you, but I do appreciate the opportunity for the Kidney Foundation, myself and Anthony, to speak to you about it. So the Kidney Foundation is essentially a voice for the kidney community in Canada. One in 10 Canadians do experience kidney disease. So that's roughly 4 million Canadians who have kidney disease. And there's 50,000 of us who have what's called end-stage renal failure. And that means that your kidneys are no longer working. And if you're lucky like me, you have a kidney transplant. Anthony is right. I have had a transplant now for almost 50 years. And I really truly am one of the lucky ones. And I am appreciative of what I've been able to, the life I've been able to have, and the Kidney Foundation's support through research to make many more 48-year transplant recipients. But there's probably 62% of those 50,000 Canadians who aren't fortunate enough to have a transplant, that they are living on dialysis. Having been on dialysis myself for two years while I waited for my transplant, yes, it has changed a lot and it's progressed quite a bit. But I will tell you that even 48 years later, it is not a life I would recommend for anyone. That being on dialysis means that you are relying on a machine to keep you alive. So you are showing up to a dialysis center or a hospital, and you are getting your blood cleaned. And for four or five hours, possibly three times a week, you're sitting there or lying there watching that blood come out of you, be cleaned. be cleaned by this machine, and get back into your body so that you can go and attempt to lead whatever you can classify as a normal life at that particular time in your life. And the dialysis treatments are very debilitating. I can't begin to tell you how exhausted you are. Think about how exhausted you are today after four hours in a meeting, or almost four hours in this meeting, and maybe multiply it by 1,000 times, and you'll get a sense of how exhausted you will be after a dialysis treatment. Not only that, but you won't have a lunch that you had, given the dietary restrictions you have. I used to, I can't say I'd look forward to it, but my lunch is often consisted of salt-free tuna sandwiches on salt-free bread and salt-free butter, not something that I was anxiously looking forward. You're exhausted, you can't work. Many dialysis patients can't work, which means that they have very severe financial problems. So as I said, it's just not a life I would recommend for everyone. And so on the Kidney Foundation, what we're trying to do is improve lives of dialysis patients to the extent that we can. And that's where it comes in with respect to the report that's before you today. Dialysis patients have to count on the treatments to save their lives, and many of them have no way of getting to those treatments, and so they are counting on Grand River Transit to get them there. And right now, it's something that they don't have to worry about, that they know that the ride is there for them when they need it, and more importantly, they know that the ride is there for them to take them home again. And what you are going to look at in a report today is something that could potentially take that away from them. And given that, the condition that they are on, they need your help, members of your community need your help in terms of getting to a place where they can be dialysis. I understand, and I've looked at the report and I see why some of the reasons behind this. I understand the financial concerns that are there. I also understand the AODA component that's here. But AODA is not meant to take away, it's meant to open up and have everybody have that accessibility. And what you're doing with this report is a takeaway for dialysis patients, and it's a takeaway that this population can least afford. Yes, I understand that there is a process that they can follow with respect to getting that rides when they need. But one of the things that we've learned through COVID is the inability of people to follow process. Certain populations have struggles to take advantage of the, or to utilize the process that's there for them. And so by taking away this ride or this transportation to their life-saving treatments, and making them work through the process, then you are putting forward another risk for this population. And so what, as I said, you know, given the impact of this, the potential impact of this, that's what has me concerned about what the recommendations are in there. In closing, and happy to answer any questions that you have, I would ask that you defer accepting the recommendations at this time. Instead, I would ask you to ask staff to concentrate on number C, on the third one, which is continue to engage in discussions with the local unit to improve joint scheduling practices to streamline operations and mitigate the impact of these changes to dialysis patients. See what you can get done here first before we move to the more drastic recommendation, which is to take away this ride, potentially take away this ride for a life-saving treatment that the dialysis patients need. So they need your support on this. And I do recognize the concerns that Grand River Transit has, the need that they have to be compliant with AODA. I understand the financial considerations, but let's try to mitigate the impacts if we can before we move to these recommendations. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Terry. And we'll move to Councilor McGarry first. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the delegation, thank you very much for both of you for coming out to delegate today and shine a little bit of light on some of the issues that people with dialysis treatment have to look to. One of the things I wanted some clarification on, Mr. Young, if it's okay, was timing. Could you just clarify how long a dialysis treatment lasts? And the hours that dialysis patients have to endure when they go in for their treatment?
Yeah, so it is one of the areas of improvement that I've seen over the last four and a half decades. When I was on dialysis, it used to take me 11 hours to get my blood cleaned. And I would essentially try to sleep. I was not able to sleep much, but now it's reduced to about four hours, sometimes longer, depending on the characteristics of the individual. And so, but the impact is still the same. I mean, essentially, you've had your blood drawn out of your body, fed into this machine to be cleansed, then returned to you. And it can be exhausting. And so there are, most dialysis patients go in three times a week, and they're scheduled in the morning, they're scheduled in the afternoon, they're scheduled at night, because these, depending on the availability of a unit or a machine to perform this service.
If I may, Madam Chair, just a quick follow-up. So if it was an evening or a nighttime visit, what times visits take place?
So they can be, you know, in the morning, they can start 6:30, 7 o'clock, whenever the hospital is. Very rarely do you see a dialysis overnight, but more intent of the four to five hours. So it could be at 6:30, it could be at 6 o'clock at night, and they would be done by 10 or 11 and go home after that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shontz.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I went with my dad for some dialysis. He was just on it for very, very short term, so I can't imagine what a long-term diet of that would be like for anyone. My question is, are all patients who are on dialysis extremely tired at the end? I'm just trying to get to what I think the recommendation is suggesting, that perhaps some people might be okay to take public transit or some other mode. Do you have any sense of, you know, differences between people and what that might look like?
Yeah, I think that's not everyone, you know, needs this. Some of them may have family support that's providing them. Some of them may be stronger than others. But the reality, I guess what I'm more concerned about is the painting everybody in the same brush and saying that, you know, there's a process, follow that process. And I think that when you are doing that, as I said, one of the lessons I think we've learned out of COVID is just how hard process can be for certain individuals. And so I would hate to have an individual, a dialysis patient, in your community not being able to access a ride and missing one of these treatments because of that. And so I think what they have right now is they can count on the ride. They can count on getting to their treatment, and they can count on getting home. And I think the recommendations that are being made puts this at risk. And what I would suggest is that staff spend more time on option C and come back to you with a report on how they've mitigated these impacts before moving to this and then starting to mitigate those impacts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jaworski.
Thank you, Terry, for the information and through. I see you're representing Kidney Foundation of Canada, and you know, the staff have done a bit of environmental scan of some other municipalities and their, how they, their mobility transit, so to speak. I'm wondering, what other solutions have you seen in other areas of the country that work? Because I would think that there would be certainly a variety of solutions for this issue. I wonder what you've seen.
So I do think depending on the community that there will be different examples in Toronto. Real Trans, there were other, you know, assistance, if you will. So it really depends on the assistance that the community is able to provide and what they can take advantage of. And again, I think this sort of speaks to what I'm asking here, is to consider the impacts, consider the solutions, consider what's available before you go down this path. There's no question that Grand River Transit has some concerns that it has to address. And, you know, we want to be part of the solution, we want to help, but at the same time, we want to make sure that every possible, you know, consideration has been given before you too quickly go down this path.
Just to wade in, currently, we're not aware of another municipality in Ontario that, where this has become an issue in the last, you know, at least since COVID. We did have a challenge in Toronto a number of years ago. That was purely a cost-cutting measure. But the other communities in which, you know, people dialyze in and where they use similar systems to Mobility Plus, there hasn't been a discussion around how AODA impacts patients getting to and from life-sustaining dialysis treatments. To Terry's earlier point, you know, it doesn't seem that AODA would place dialysis patients in a position where they're receiving less service by somehow enhancing the service of others. It's about balance and need. So that's where I think, you know, we're a little surprised by these recommendations because AODA hasn't, with respect to transportation, in other parts of the province.
Thank you. And just one more question, and I'll be asking it of staff, and it's probably unfair to the Kidney Foundation. But I'm just, I always try and draw analogies to different levels of service or different needs. And I think about cancer patients who are going in for treatment, which is again, life-saving and required and that. And I know they don't feel well afterwards. I'm just, I'm trying to think of an analogy to that of how that service works and how you might differentiate that, because I will be asking this of staff later.
So how I might differentiate that is that when you are cancer patients and, you know, I have experience with kidney disease. I've had colon cancer, because of the condition I'm in, I have a compromised immune system. So I'm, you know, at the risk of a number of things. And the only difference I might draw, and I'm not, is that the dialysis patient, these people are going to live their lives out on, many of them will live their lives out on dialysis. And we hope they're long lives, and we hope that they can continue to receive this treatment, that they can continue to get to these treatments. But, you know, what we're trying to do is make sure that, you know, at the best, we're trying to do is improve the quality of their lives. We're not trying to, but we, you know, very strong about not letting the quality that they have deteriorate anymore.
Thank you very much, Terry. I'm done, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thanks. Another question for Terry. If you were to, I'm trying to really understand what the largest concern is here. If you were to sort of rank your priorities, is it the fact that some people who might need mobility transport may not be able to get it, or is it the fact that they would need to be booking three appointments a week and there's a lot of hassle associated with that? What would be the primary issue from your perspective?
So the primary issue for me is that they would not be able to get to those treatments. And so, yes, I understand that what Grand River Transit is proposing here is a booking system. And I'm just asking you to put yourself in the position that this patient is in. And, you know, the counselor previously had talked about how debilitating cancer treatments can be. And absolutely, that's the case. And to find yourself in dialysis treatments are exactly that same thing. And to find yourself in a position where you can't think about anything, but how just exhausted you are and how just mentally, emotionally, physically, how you are feeling in that particular time, the last thing you can focus on is the need to book a ride to your next appointment, or the appointment next week. And so this is just the way that this is, and I applaud the region for what they've done here, for how much they are doing for dialysis patients now, because it is one less thing that they have to worry about. And so you are, and so it's just this whole, you know, how do you, you know, them having to worry about this thing. And the next thing you know, you know, they haven't booked their ride. They, you know, whether they can get a taxi, or maybe they can't do that, and to ask someone to get on a bus, believe me, it's just not, it's not something that someone would be able to do. So it's really around that assurance that they can get to their treatment is what I'm the most worried about. And that's why I say that, you know, what I'm asking for staff to do is to take the time to work with the renal health unit, to work with us if we can help, and try to provide that level of assurance in whichever way that can be provided.
Thank you. I think when staff are ready to speak, I'm going to ask, I'll ask a question about whether the conversations with hospital include any potential for the hospital to support those bookings of appointments. Seems to me that this is one of many, many areas where we're providing a service that I think should actually be a health-provided service in some way.
Exactly, if I could. I mean, I think that's, so where is the, so how are these impacts mitigated? Is I guess what I'm saying, that I would like to have, you know, that fully explored before you take this step of removing this assistance, or potentially removing this assistance from dialysis patients.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Redmond.
Thank you, Chair Jow. I really want to thank both Anthony and Terry for coming in and providing this sort of first-person picture. And Counselor Clark actually sort of touched on what I wanted to. And Terry, you've been very explicit that under C, you want more conversation, so you're not opposed to change, you just want it to continue to develop, and that's something that the renal unit and you are willing to work on. And I guess the only other question I would have is, I would think that people that are receiving dialysis probably don't want to be whipsawed, so whatever change is made, it needs to have lots of runway in order to make this change better known and for them to accommodate.
Thank you. I fully agree with what you just said.
Thank you.
Counselor Galway.
I'm sure. A question to each of you, different questions to each of you. Terry, what, help me understand why a person under the system that is being proposed would not get to their appointment? If these appointments, I believe, are scheduled well in advance, and then the individual would be able to book their ride like anybody else. So why would they not get to their appointment?
So I guess the point I would make here is they're not like anybody else. That they are in a extremely...
I understand that, I understand that, but they would book their ride like anybody else.
But what I'm saying to you is that...
Access to the service like anybody else. So I'm just, how does that booking system potentially cause them to miss their appointment?
Because I think you need to recognize the burden that you're placing on them to do that. That these are people who may not be able to engage in that process, that they may be in a condition that they're just not able to do this, to get online, to get on the phone, or whatever. That they are just...
Do they not have to go through the booking system now, in some manner, to get their ride? Even though they're guaranteed a ride?
Yeah, and all of that ride is...
I take it.
It's all set up in advance, and they are able to count on that being there. But I think this is the, I think this is, you raised a really important point, is that, you know, what are the steps that can be taken to mitigate this concern? And I don't know that those have been fully fleshed out. And so I'm asking is that staff work with the local unit, that they understand the impacts and that they have mitigate those impacts, that they don't make a commitment to that. that they don't make a commitment to that, that they actually have done that before you accept the recommendations.
Okay. Then, Anthony, you mentioned other municipalities. So my understanding is, or other municipalities haven't had any challenges, AODA challenges, and for that matter, nor have we. But how are they dealing with this particular, you know, clientele when many of the municipalities don't give the priority service to the dialysis patient as as we currently do?
Yeah, unfortunately, I think we've we've lost Anthony.
Okay, sorry. So. Terry, you're probably able to answer too, so.
Well, I I think what he was simply saying was is that that AODA hasn't understand the need to comply with the AODA legislation. And that where municipalities have similar programs in place, they're not calling back, if you will, a service that that is already in place in order to meet the AODA obligations. I do understand the AODA obligations. But I, you know, as 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 I said, and as Anthony said, I think AODA was meant to to provide more, not to to take away.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But I I also understand that many other municipalities who have the, you know, all municipalities have a a parallel transportation system, a type of mobility plus. But many of them do not give priority to to dialysis patients and but nonetheless are providing service to dialysis patients. So I'm wondering how that works in those other communities to avoid the concerns that that you're expressing.
So what I can say to you, that if if indeed that there is a an opportunity for the staff to come back to council at a future date with with the plan on how these concerns are going to be mitigated, we would also be prepared to talk with a report on how how municipalities are dealing with this as well. I will tell you, the transportation is a huge issue for for kidney patients in in Ontario, particularly in northern regions where, you know, you're traveling quite a distance in order to get to your dialysis treatment. And, you know, the Kidney Foundation has has programs in place. We provide financial assistance. We, you know, look for ways, other ways that we can help people get to and from their dialysis treatments. And this is again why I commend your community for what you have put in place. I think it's something that has has extremely benefited the dialysis population, which is again why we're concerned that this might be taken away from them.
Good, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I will go to Counselor Foxton.
Thank you, Chair. Peter, I want to go back to the question that Counselor Galway had because I believe the report originally said that there would be no advanced booking. And then it changed that you could book in advance. And this was in regards to, I believe, the dialysis, which is the system right now that you have to do. You still have to book it. But Peter, would you clarify that for me so I'm not getting wrong information?
Thank you for the question to you, Madam Chair. So right now, the current situation through the renal unit, the renal unit books and organizes rides for dialysis dialysis patients. That would still take place under what we're proposing.
Okay, so then there isn't any really any big change, except we recognize that everybody's on a level playing field. Because we're not just dealing with dialysis, we're dealing with heart, we're dealing with cancer, we're dealing with people that can't drive because of some type of injury or other. So it becomes a more level playing field.
Through, correct, through you, Madam Chair. The, you're correct, that's, it's a level playing field that takes away trip purpose as a determination of who gets priority for a trip. So it's, it would return, would turn into first come, first served for all trips. And so, and, you know, on to, I believe there was a question regarding what's most important. And Mr. Young and perhaps some of our other delegates would have different opinions. But I think the big change for individuals would, we put dialysis trips right now in front of all other trips. So we won't cancel them, we'll get you there, we'll get you back. We guarantee, we provide them every day. Under the changes, vast majority of clients that are needing dialysis will be assessed and be eligible for mobility services. Depending on the demands at the time of dialysis, not everyone would get a trip potentially. The vast majority would be. But the small end of that wedge, that thin edge, may not. So some people may not get a trip versus today, which is we get everybody there for dialysis and someone else doesn't get the trip. I hope that answers the question, Counsel.
So you get everyone there from dialysis. And then when you say someone else, you mean a non-dialysis patient? So all dialysis patients will be taken care of, is that what you're saying?
Under, no, under, sorry, my apologies. That wasn't clear. Under today's arrangement, all dialysis trips are done. But in the future, all dialysis purposes would be gone. Right? We'll just first come, first serve. It doesn't matter if it's medical, doesn't matter if it's social, doesn't matter what it is. First come, first serve on trip, trip for your trip. So I hope that provides you with that distinction.
Okay, so it's a clinic.
Can I just call point of order here? I, this is me learning, so I apologize. So we are supposed to take all questions of the delegation first and then all questions of of staff. And this seems to be sort of moving far away from that. So I apologize and I'll get us back on track. So thanks, everybody, for your patience.
Just trying to get clarification, Counselor Galway's question.
I know, so, sorry, Counselor Foxton, that was my fault, not yours. So do you have any other questions of our delegation? And and then Counselor Foxton, I'm quite happy to come back to you or stay with you, depending on what square number one, Counselor Shontz. I'll I'll do better, I promise. Counselor Shontz, is your question of the delegation or of staff?
It was of staff first, so I'll I'll wait.
Okay, so I just want to ensure if there's no other questions for our delegation, Terry. Then thank you so much for coming today. I learned an incredible amount and I do have a friend that is is just very close to dialysis. So it was very, very much important to understand. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much for sharing your experience with us.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Adrian, oh, okay. So I just wanted to make sure, have I had all the questions on this issue? Is there anybody that's got a question of staff? So Counselor Clark, you still do? All right, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. So if in fact the vast majority of dialysis patients will still be eligible, serve service, where are we coming up with the financial savings that that we're that we're projecting? And I'm really trying to get my head around how much of this is an AODA thing and how much of it is a resource thing?
So challenging question through you, Madam Chair. The AODA is part of the equation here. In our service review, the consultant identified that we were an outlier in the areas of AODA or compliance with trip prioritization. Right? So no one prioritizes trips under our peer groups, which were York Region, London Transit, Oakville, Durham Region, Peale Region, Burlington Transit and Hamilton. So we're an outlier in that agency, in that in that issue, pardon me. And also in that we do not assess all clients. We don't assess dialysis patients. So that's the one case. So and to to the financial side of it, the service review done by KPMG identified that reviewing our procedures, including booking processes and mobility plus, should result in financial savings. So from our perspective, we can reduce costs by about one vehicle and one per year, which is the $220,000 recommended in the report.
Thank you, Counselor Shontz.
Thank you to to Mr. Zink. So so just, I I I want to see if I understand the process. So I need to go on dialysis. I apply to you and say, I need dialysis, can you accommodate me? And you say, yes, you you qualify, put me on a list. And then when I need to go for my treatments, I call and book a ride. How far in advance can I book those rides?
Through you, Madam Chair, you can book them seven days in advance. And they can be subscription trips to a certain percentage of our total trips. So subscription trips would mean I'm going every Monday, Wednesday, Friday at seven o'clock in the morning and those repeat. So that would be the best case scenario for customers. But we have, we have limits on how many of those we can can provide. On demand trips would mean I need to go next Thursday and you can do that seven days in advance.
Okay, so for subscription trips, I can book like a month ahead?
All of, so part of the the service review we conducted, we had a approximately 25% cancellation rate. And that was identified, the cause of that was a long advanced booking windows. So 28 day booking window resulted in a lot of people forgetting about their issues. And this probably is not a dialysis related. But it does mean we had a lot of cancellations for for things that changed in people's lives. And a lot of those cancellations came in late, which means service isn't used effectively. So you, so the recommendation was to reduce the booking window to seven days. And that's for subscription and for on demand trips as well.
That would be the same thing for, and the recommendation would be the same thing for a cancer patient or whatever particular reason you would have for using mobility.
Through you, Madam Chair, that's correct, Counselor. I think you broke up a bit, but I understood most of that question. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to allow for one more question here. And because we have other other delegations again who have been waiting for quite some time. So I think I appreciate your patience, Counselor Noak, if you'd like to ask your final question so we can get to the next question.
Yeah, just just a quick question to to Peter. Peter, it was, it was mentioned that the renal unit books the 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 rides for for the patients. Is there any, would there be any sense in having a discussion with them to see if, you know, that that they can ensure that, you know, that you can work a little bit closer together as was suggested in in item number three? Maybe maybe there's room there for some discussion to, you know, have a better communication.
Through you, Madam Chair. Counselor, that's, we have engaged those discussions with the renal unit. Since our last report last year, we've had a number of discussions with the renal unit. And we're working on developing solutions to reduce demand, peak demands on mobility services to the to for dialysis patients to the renal unit. Many of those solutions lay with with the renal unit and discussions are ongoing. And we would expect them to continue over the next while. And so that's where we are. So you absolutely re-support that.
So would the deferral have any benefit at all at this point? I mean.
It it does have some benefit. A comment earlier about, you know, transition into to these changes needs to be more gradual. So that, you know, the gradual change and discussion with the renal unit is helpful.
Okay. Does, one more question, if I may, just quickly. Does the renal unit also book rides for other medical issues?
Not that I'm aware, Counselor. I believe it's just for dialysis appointments.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Noak. And I did say one question, so you owe the jar a dollar. Okay. Take it away. We are looking for Mr. Adrian Hastings, if you're in the Zoom room. Adrian?
Yes, thank you.
There you are. Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate all these questions being raised. I am advocating on behalf of my friend Kathy Sebastian. She's not able to speak today, obviously with several health complications. She is a dialysis patient. She's been on dialysis for 13 years. So she's been doing things at home, Freeport and Grand River Hospital. She's very concerned about these changes. There is a lot of miscommunication among the between GRT and the dialysis community. Currently, she told me that the dialysis unit books her appointment for Grand River Transit. The bus comes, picks her up for appointments, et cetera. I feel like I've heard conflicting reports from Peter said both that's what happens and that she would have to call in to have that done. So regardless, I would like to read a statement from my friend Kathy Sebastian and then also make a few comments from myself. Kathy Sebastian also is speaking from the heart here. This may not be a completely polished presentation, but this is, this is how she feels. She feels that her community is being marginalized by these changes and that there has not been adequate consultation with this community. And just to further that, this is a community that is in the hospital four hours a day, three days a week. If we want to consult with these people, I imagine it would be quite easy to find where they are for 12 hours a day and or for 12 hours a week and just talk with them and see what they need. It's a, it's not an easy disease and it's it's debilitating, right? And the last thing we need is for this community to have to have any undue pressure where there shouldn't be. So anyway, I I'm going to speak what my friend Kathy Sebastian has said. She says, my name is Kathy Sebastian. She says, thank you so much, Regional Council as a whole, for hearing my statement. A few months ago, I found a note on the registration desk at the renal clinic left for patients to do a GRT survey. Just a few questions into the survey and I knew we were in trouble. I contacted my friend, Ms. Larrabee, another dialysis patient, and we decided that we had to try and do something. Who was going to speak for the patients who didn't have computers, who didn't speak English, who had cognitive issues and just played, didn't understand this survey? So this survey was done online and I don't know what other consultation was done except for online. I went home and tried to print out a hard copy of the survey. I called the hospital GRT rep and asked how I could get it distributed to those who needed to see the troubling questions on the survey. She suggested that she would print the survey off for me and made would make sure patients that needed it got them. That was the first of many misleading statements that I was given. The survey asked questions about how patients would react if they had no way to get to dialysis, if GRT didn't provide a way. It didn't discuss that we would no longer have the privilege of having our rides booked automatically for us as it has always been by subscription through the renal clinic. This was the most troubling part of the problem and no one even knew about it. I was only told this when I phoned administration to discuss other problems. Being put in this position, I had to quickly explore my options. Some of us are lucky enough to have family to be able to drive us. People like myself would have to take a cab to and from the hospital, costing $32 one way or $900 a month, all of which adds up to potentially $2,000 for those who live in Cambridge. Personally, that's more than half my pension or all of the Cambridge government pension completely. The Kidney Foundation does not have a volunteer base to drive people to and from appointments as does the Cancer Society. We have the potential booking, we have the potential booking issues if this new program is implemented. What will happen to those who still don't know about this because they have not been able to get this information? And this is also confusing because I've heard several different things already. Subscription privileges, there is nothing wrong with those subscription privileges, but we do not want to be. those subscription privileges, but we do not wanna begrudge those who need the GRT to get to work. Everyone needs access for this bus. Um, but, uh, dialysis is something that is an urgent medical need. After being late due to very poor GRTC ride scheduling over two weeks, I had missed two hours of dialysis due to late arrivals. This caused several health complications, uh, including making it difficult for her to breathe due to fluid buildup. This entire project, um, we took on, um, there's a lot of stress of trusting people who are paid to protect us and not being able to help us. This has caused a lot of trouble mentally and physically for all of us, which is why we are speaking to you today. Endless phone calls and paperwork to all levels of government, um, have yielded some results, but we are looking to get clarification and to help us with this issue. Uh, in closing, um, I think it, it was mentioned that we need to level the playing field, and I feel like right now the lit, the playing field isn't level. Um, if I have to go to the hospital three times a week for life-saving measures, in my opinion, is different than someone who needs to go out for a drink with a friend, um, who still needs that bus. Nonetheless, everyone needs this service if they need it. Um, maybe money, saving money isn't the issue. Maybe we need to expand service to all and make sure everyone has a chance. Um, I know I'm running out of time, but also, um, I feel like there hasn't been adequate consultation on several levels for this. Uh, I think it would do a disservice to just push this through. I think definitely we need to ask more questions and figure out, uh, what would benefit the community most for this. And one final point, um, if saving money is the issue here, um, I think we're doing a good, uh, great disservice in the fact that, um, it, Kathy mentioned if she misses two or three appointments a month, which could happen if she has to call in to try and book these appointments and maybe the bus is full, um, she could end up going to the hospital. I realize hospital isn't, uh, on your budgetary concern, but it would be for provincial and federal. I mean, two hundred thousand dollars, that's maybe fifty to seventy hospital visits, um, if, if someone had to go to the ER for, um, for emergency treatment. So I mean, if saving money is the issue, this is not saving money. Uh, and it's also causing undue stress on a marginalized population. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Adrian. Okay, so we're gonna go to questions of the delegation here. Is, Councilor Foxton, please.
Thank you. Just for clarification, Adrian, mobility plus is not for going to a drink. A lot of these people are quadriplegics, or they have other issues, and their only means of getting out of the house, going to doctor's appointments, or the hospital, or anything, is mobility plus. So I, I really hope you don't assume that mobility plus is for people who go joyriding. These people, you have to prove you're disabled. You have to prove your inability to get onto a bus before you can go to mobility plus. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could respond. Uh, sorry, I, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to be flippant about that comment. I was more mentioning if we are going to have open availability for all, then obviously some trips will be for, um, even for groceries or things like that versus being able to go to the hospital. So I mean, we need to have this access for everyone. Um, and I agree, it shouldn't matter what reason you're using the bus. Um, ob- obviously, a life-saving procedure would be more important than, um, going to play bridge with a friend or, um, something else. Um, but I, I in no way mean to say anyone shouldn't have access to this bus. Everyone should have access to this bus, especially those who need a life, or in a life-saving procedure to use it, yes.
And, and as stated, these people are either quadriplegic, or they have cancer issues or health issues. You have to prove you cannot get onto a normal bus. You have to prove that to be on mobility plus.
Yeah, and I think Terry, Terry also mentioned that, that the, these are patients who, um, have low energy, um, uh, my friend Kathy, she can barely make it from the curb to the bus. I mean, she, i- 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 it's not an easy disease to live with, especially for thirteen years. So, um, putting any, any undue stress on this, uh, on this population is just, we need, we need to consult a little more and figure out a better solution.
Okay, thanks, Adrian. One moment, please. Uh, Councilor McGarry.
And thank you through your Madam Chair to the delegation. Thank you very much for your passionate, uh, uh, presentation. I certainly understand that, um, what you say about kidney and dialysis patients, they're not only fatigued, they're immunocompromised. Many of them have mobility issues. And I also know that it's concerning to them because the start and finish of their dialysis treatments can be early morning and late in the evening, long after the, uh, Grand River Transit, um, bus system may be shut down for the night. I also did, uh, wanna point out that this is a regional, this is a, a regional, um, uh, dialysis center, and that there are many patients coming out from outside our region that depend on transportation from there, but that's not in front of us today. So I guess my question to you then, uh, Adrian, is that if indeed, um, one of the dialysis patients has kind of a standing dialysis treatment from six to ten, or six AM to, to ten AM, what other alternative, uh, transportation options do they have besides, um, uh, mobility plus?
Uh, well, my friend specifically would be a taxi. Um, whether or not they'd be able to afford it, obviously not, uh, going six days a week um, from that distance. Um, I would hope that, um, that we would be able to, a solution, um, through, I mean, it was talked about that the cancer, the Cancer Society is able to get their patients to and from the hospital, and I think that's commendable. Um, I do, that obviously cancer is a huge, a huge fundraiser. For cancer, uh, dialysis is not. So the, those resources aren't there, and maybe that's, that's what's needed. Um, but in the interim, what's working right now with the GRTC for her is working. It's being scheduled. Um, if those supports disappear, then I don't know how she's gonna be able to make it to the hospital, or other patients for that matter.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I, I really appreciate your remarks, Adrian, and if there are no more questions, we will ask you to, uh, remove yourself from our Zoom room, and, uh, we'll continue on with the recommendation as per staff, uh, and I am looking for someone to make a motion. Or to move this motion, I should say. Councilor Foxton, seconded by, I've been muted. Uh, you got that? Okay. Good, okay. Councilor Foxton, Councilor Galway, all those in favor, please use your yes and no icons.
Uh, Madam Chair, I was going to ask what the motion be to defer. I was gonna ask for a deferral.
You wanna?
Because, uh, I was asking for a motion to defer. As, as Peter Zink said, the deferral would allow them to look into it deeper and also do a gradual, so I'm asking for a motion to defer.
I would second that motion.
Fair enough, Councilor Noack. Okay, and I'm seeing heads nodding, so, uh, use your icons. All those in favor? To defer, that is, to be clear. Yep, okay, so that deferral is carried. Thank you, everyone. All right, and I-
Sorry, Chair, just, um, do, do we have a time for the deferral? I guess it's something you wouldn't do.
Do we usually do a time in, next committee? Next committee? Or the next cycle? So Peter, are you still in the Hollywood Squares? Yes, okay. Is, is the next cycle okay for you or not?
Uh-huh. See, uh, Mr. Smith is on the line too, so I would imagine he'd all have the same comment I do, so I'll let him go first.
Or he may be trying to save you from a very expedient report turnaround. Yes.
Exactly that. There, there is, it's just technically not possible for us to get it to the next meeting. We, we could aim for the after that, so not in, uh, November, but in, in December, so we could target that for coming, coming back. And, and that's fine. We'll, we will do some additional work. I do wanna say, though, that GRT did a, a fair amount of consultation with the various, various groups, and I also want to know that we are not saying that the renal unit cannot book these meetings. They can continue to book these meetings. It's just they now need to be booked seven days in, in advance. And they're not absolutely guaranteed, which is why we're being very cautious to say that some, some bookings may not may miss out. We expect the vast majority will not have any, any issues at all. And there continues to also be on the day of, so there are still rides available on that day that you can book. So you have two kind of opportunities, seven days and the day. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, and we'll come back if, if it's all right in, uh, approximately two months, not the next meeting, but the meeting afterwards.
I know. Fair enough. Okay, I think, thank you very much, Thomas, for saving Peter. He, he seemed to be smiling more after that, so. Much appreciated, everybody. Thank you for the fulsome discussion, as always. Do we have any, do you guys have legacy hands or questions? I thought there was a rule, no legacy hands after lunch? Questions, okay? I think it's Councilor Galway first.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm fine with the deferral, of course. I voted for it, but I'm just wondering if in the report that staff are going to come back with, there's a couple of things I'd like them to address. And, and the one is, what do other, I, I, it was in the report, what do other uh, transit authorities do with this particular, how, how have they solved this particular problem, other transit authorities? I understand that we're one of a few, if maybe the only transit authority that gives the priority we do. So therefore, these other transit authorities have resolved this problem somehow, aren't they? Or the problem doesn't exist, or the problem does exist. Just wondering if we get some more information on what the other transit authorities, and you, you identified quite a few, Peter, um, that do not have the policy that we currently have in terms of giving dialysis patients priority service. And then the other question I, I would like to address, whether or not the taxi script program, uh, has any, um, any potential as a, um, as a solution that could be addressed in the, um, in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Galway. Councilor Clark?
Uh, thanks, Chair. Just, uh, with, with regards to the information coming back, uh, one of the reasons that I sort of tentatively was in support of this when we first heard about it was that I imagined that this, this change would make rides more readily available to the rest of the population that needs mobility. And, um, I'm not hearing that in the report, and although I, I thank the delegations for coming, I found them very compelling. But I also hear, as I know everybody on council does regularly, from people who say, I can never get a ride because tho- those rides are all booked. So, you know, I, 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 I would like to be able to evaluate the information that's coming back to us with both of those groups in mind, not just the people who, who are receiving dialysis, um, because I think that, um, uh, as, as, um, Adrian said, it, for me, this is not a, a cost-cutting measure. This is, this is a, a, a better trans, a better, uh, allocation of resources uh, measure, but not a, not a savings of resources measure.
Okay, did you get that, Peter?
I did.
Okay. And Chair Redman?
Thank you. Um, I, I too just wanted to add a couple of comments, and that is to say that I understand that this creates a lot of uncertainty in the entire disabled community. And I too have been he- hearing a lot of criticism of having to get on the phone Monday morning and just keep calling and calling and calling so that they, they can have a social life. And these are people, as, uh, Councilor Foxton has underscored, who rely on this to get around, and this, you know, so many disabled members of, um, our community do live on the margins, and they do depend on this kind of parallel transit. So I think for some people it would be good news if it looked like they would get more access, and I understand why the, uh, community who are on dialysis feel like this is less than, which is probably why we're hearing from them. So I guess, um, I would just, and, um, I don't know if staff wanna respond, but it does strike me that this will create a lot of, um, uncertainty and, um, some angst in the community. So I hope as we go forward with another couple of months, I'm wondering, um, if we can communicate with them, and I, and I understand too that, um, it's easy to criticize the consultation process when you don't like the result, but I would hope that there is a variety of ways that we are seeking to get, um, feedback, not, again, not just from the, uh, community, um, who depend on it for dialysis, but the, the broader community as well. And, um, I, I look forward to, um, also having, um, some of the delegations that presented today, working with, uh, GRT to find out, um, better solutions to, uh, serve, um, our community.
Uh, thanks, Chair Redman. And, I mean, if I could just throw in a, a quick two cents, Peter, I like to be really fast because I'm, I'm being last here, but, um, it's not our lane, but could we look at the cost factor of that? I know that, uh, Councilor Kiefer had mentioned it earlier, that cost factor for, uh, satellite office, uh, you know, in whatever, whatever area, it seems to have, uh, the demand that might actually reduce the strain on that system to be, you know, to be better spread out throughout the community for multiple reasons. Uh, it's just another thought to add.
Yeah, uh, you just, quick comment, and I've had similar, uh, suggestion from Councilor Kiefer.
Yep.
And, you know, uh, closer access to those living in Cambridge would reduce the demand for those living, for demand for transit and make trips shorter, which has the advantage of freeing up some resources. So, uh, our ability to influence that is, uh, is limited here in my, my office, but, uh, there's benefit. I see Tom, Councilor, Commissioner Smith.
I was going to agree with, with Peter, but also say, in the context of us reporting back in two months, I'm hoping people don't expect that we're going to be able to answer that question.
Right, that's a big question, isn't it? May, maybe.
It's a longer-term question that I, I, I think we can have some discussion on how best to deal with that, but I'm not sure if GRT in a couple of months is gonna be able to get a, it'd be nice if we could get a quick answer on it, but I suspect it'll take a bit longer.
Not to worry. Chair Redman's pretty well connected throughout the communities. Maybe she can ask some of her, uh, some of her colleagues out there, and we can get at least some kind of an idea. Maybe it's time for some advocacy, and it could help the system, but anyway, I'll leave that. Councilor Foxton?
Now, just really quickly, um, going back to when Cambridge Hospital was being built, they actually said that the dialysis unit was coming to Cambridge. So let's find out what happened with that. I thought that was, it should have already been here, so maybe we can reach out and find out.
Okay, that's great. Well done, Councilor Kiefer, for raising that, oh, so long ago. All right, so four point four, and I've seen Mr. Newfeld popping in and popping out. I hope he's still there, patiently waiting his turn to speak to us. There you are. Long time no see. How are you holding up, John?
I'm good. Thanks, Councilor Jala. You gonna give me my five-minute, uh, warning?
Yes, you do, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, Regional Council. I'm here in response to staff report emergency shelter update on page fifty-six. I am in full support of staff's recommendations and wanna add some urgency to the anticipated six million dollar shortfall. There is the risk that we go back to old solutions for new problems. There's been a forty-four percent increase in chronic homelessness since the pandemic, but let's be clear, that was a growing problem since twenty seventeen. The pandemic just highlighted it. Actually, the pandemic was a gift in the sense that it allowed us to try new things and to innovate. Through emergency funding, we were able to provide twenty-four-seven care and integrate healthcare into some of our shelter settings. What were the outcomes? While we had record number of individuals who were housed and very few came back, unlike in the past where people would have numerous housing breakdowns and continuously return to the shelter. Shelters have dramatically changed over the past decade. I still remember walking through our shelter a decade ago, when we used to be concerned when someone had alcohol on their breath before entering the building. We often had empty beds, and at times had only thirty-five to forty residents. Compared that to twenty eighteen, when we never had an empty bed and were discharging to the street because there are no, were no other shelter beds available. Shelters used to be places where we'd provide a map and a meal. With some care and support, the majority of folks were able to move on with their lives. I don't remember hearing of an overdose in the first five years of my service. And now since twenty seventeen, it's just assumed that there will be regular overdoses, and our staff are called upon regularly to hopefully reverse overdoses. Participants dying has become a normalized occurrence. It's inaccurate to call this work shelter anymore. Speak to any of our shelter providers in Waterloo region, and you'll realize that shelter workers are now first responders. It would be more accurate to name these places, complex care facilities for individuals struggling with extreme mental health and addictions. We're mini hospitals without hospital funding. The challenges are growing well before the pandemic, and will continue to grow as our community continues to grow rapidly. When we talk about homelessness, we often hear about the number of individuals experiencing homelessness. homelessness. We completely overlook the people who have dedicated themselves to walk with these individuals. I want to honor the individuals who have served shelters during the pandemic and the extra heroic measures they have taken to keep people safe. They have literally saved countless lives and it has taken an extreme toll on them. You are never the same after you witness someone overdosing or dying. Imagine having experienced that over and over again. We cannot go back to the way we used to do things. We cannot simply provide a mat and a meal and hope that magically people will get better and housed. They will get worse and not get the appropriate housing needed. We're grateful that our region has embraced the Housing First approach. An effective shelter system actually enhances the Housing First model. Imagine a hospital without an emergency department. You come in and you're wandering around trying to figure out where to go. You've got a broken arm and you land in the maternity ward. That's how the old model operated for years. We'd come into a shelter and we'd quickly get you in any kind of housing we could find. In a short period of time, the individual would return to the shelter because of a housing breakdown. Now let's contrast that to what we saw in the first eight months of the pandemic. Using the shelter care model where we would integrate healthcare into a dignified 24/7 complex care facility. Our overdoses dropped by 50%, use of emergency services plummeted, and we housed a record number of individuals. The 80 individuals we housed during that period, one returned. Should we be surprised by this success? Individuals are actually assessed and receive the appropriate medical, mental health and addiction support. We're able to better understand the type of housing that would best suit each individual. And individuals went into housing with at least some tools to ensure housing stability. There's no silver bullet and we're struggling. And what we are struggling with in Waterloo region is not unique to us. What is unique is that as shelter providers, we have innovated and tried new approaches during the pandemic. And now that we've seen the results, we realize we can't go back. Let's not try old solutions to new problems. My ask of you, each of you this afternoon, is that as you enter the budget season, that you remember this report. Remember the innovation and great strides that we've made in the community. What we have done here has caught the attention of other communities in our province and nationally. Let's not go backwards. We have done better. Let's continue to do so. Thank you.
Did you practice that? Look, you're right on. Thank you so much, John. So we do have some people that want to make some comments, so if you'll just stick for a moment. This is for the delegation. Correct, Counselor Jaworski? I knew it. Please proceed.
Well, thank you very much, Chair, and, and you're right. John is always right on. Good. Thank you very much, John, for showing up today. And thank you for the story of 80 people who now have housing or 79. How much of that is actually moving into supportive housing versus non-supportive housing? Do you have any facts and figures on that? I just know a lot of people need, need a hand up. And I, I just wonder how, how those figures work out.
So take the data with a grain of salt because actually the lowest number of those 80 people actually went into supportive housing. Now, that could be just because supportive housing was the least available. But when I looked at that data, I was stunned to see all the different other kinds of housing that we put, were able to place people in successfully. And so that is kind of like an emergency department. If, if we all went to the hospital and we all said we had a sore back and we were immediately told to go get back surgery without getting assessed, without getting more information, without getting sent to physio, we'd all get back surgery. And so that's kind of the, my challenge with how we did it before. And so we need to take that time, use our shelters as kind of that emergency department so that we can house people most appropriately. Because when they first come through our doors, we assume they all need supportive housing due to their level of intensity of need. But I think as we get to know them, address their immediate needs in front of us, I think we realize that we don't have to have the most intensive service for all of them.
Thank you very much, John. Excellent answer.
Thank you. So I'm not seeing any other, oh, sorry. There we go. Okay, Counselor.
Thanks for being here, John, and being patient. I hope you didn't have too much to do this morning or this afternoon. I'm glad to hear you refer to the, the frontline workers and how important they are to the work that you're doing. And I'm wondering what that, what kind of a challenge that presents for you going forward in terms of training staff, keeping staff healthy, their mental illness, their, their mental wellness, and, and hiring new staff if you need to. Is there a capacity there to, the staff, the shelter, the systems that you need?
Thank you, Counselor Erb. I'm gonna get emotional talking about our team members because, you know, I had a town hall with them the other night. And after everything they've been through, everything that they're battling, when we were asking them about feedback about certain things, they could still continuously say that their number one focus is the individuals they're serving and what they could do for them. And to continuously put the individuals we serve forefront after everything they've been through and not, not, I mean, they had every right to, I think, focus on what they've been put through, and yet it still is there. So Jim, I, sorry, Counselor Erb, we, we seem to be able to attract exceptional individuals who are incredibly committed. We haven't had a shortage of staff. I think what I will say is what has kept them hopeful is a new approach. I think had we kept doing things the way we've always done them, I'm not sure they'd stick around. But they have seen a huge difference with the model we've approached. They want to be a part of that because they know they're a part of something special and different, and that keeps them motivated. However, there's only so long that they can continuously experience what they do without burning out. So I am very concerned about that.
And, and just a, a comment, if I may, Chair Jowett. I, I do hope that the health or friendship and as a community, we are successful in the near future in relocating the 80-plus men, I think, that are currently living in Quelch that were displaced from their home and their home community. And we haven't been able to bring them back to, to Kitchener, Waterloo. And I, I truly hope that that's something that as a community, we're able to work together and get done in the, in the very near future. So these people can be brought back home to a community that they're familiar with and where they can continue to receive supports.
Thank you. Counselor McGary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's for you. It's good to see you again, John, and thank you to you and your team for the work that you do. Some of my concerns have been already addressed by other council members. But when we look at the, the upcoming year, the upcoming winter season, and looking to try and support our individuals in our community as best as we can, I know that there are consequences to not stepping up in order to support them in the way that needs to be done. And it's not just to those that are, are needing shelter and needing the services. It's also to the staff. I had a meeting fairly recently, again, with some staff that support individuals both in shelters as well as peer support workers out in the community. And the trauma that they're facing with losing individuals that they're supporting really leads me to ask you about the, about the staff and the human resources and the effect on their mental wellbeing themselves who are looking at this work. And I'm wondering if you could just really speak to the, through the unintentional consequences of not fully funding services that we need for our vulnerable people in the community.
Thanks, Counselor McGary. You're, you're bang on. This is a huge concern. The thing that keeps me up at night is asking myself, you know, in five years from now, what will the impact of the work that our team has gone through? What will the long-term impact on them individually be? And am I okay that that has happened on my watch? And that is what concerns me. I think for too long, shelter staff across all of our shelters have been asked to do superhuman work with not a lot of resources. And, and I, and I think they've put their health and wellbeing at risk in the service of others. And so I think we need to recognize that. I know we try to do what we can from a psychological wellbeing and try to put lots of programs in and heavy AP and support. But the nature of this work has changed dramatically. Things switched in 2017. I've only been, I don't have the years that, you know, Elizabeth Clark and Tinker, Sandy Dietrich-Bell have. But I can tell you that even just within my 12 years, when I compare to what I saw when I first came to what I saw since 2017, it's night and day. There has been a dramatic shift. And that is what really, really concerns me. And so that's why I'm really pushing for the way we're responding today has to be way different than the way we used to. So for shining light on and listening to those incredible voices who walk in the direct service and the impact they're having.
Thank you. And I would also suggest that the number of deaths that some of our, our, our workers see in the field is probably equivalent to some wartime veterans' experiences with seeing the, the, sort of the death and destruction that they're having to see daily. And I do worry about that. I know that in the province of Ontario, there was legislation passed for PTSD for emergency workers in 2017-ish. And I remember during those discussions, I did point to several other workforces and sectors that were not actually identified. Shelter workers was one of the things that I felt should be included in the PTSD legislation that looks at your workplace as being a presumptive reason for PTSD. So like you, I worry about those that are continually exposed to the kinds of things that we see from their experiences. And, you know, if there's no other compelling reason for us to step up as a community and as a region, then that's probably it. So that's it for my, my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Galloway?
Good to see you again, John. I'm glad to see that you and I are both wearing the same tie again today. Long-standing joke with John and I. But John, I want to pursue this a little bit further, what a couple have just commented on, and it's kind of like the crisis within the crisis. We have a crisis certainly on homelessness, shelters, you know, opioid addiction and mental health addiction are concerns. But then there's this other crisis that's going on with the staff that, that are tasked with dealing with that. And a week or two ago, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, a number of us, including Catherine, Karen, Jim, and Elizabeth, and I had a meeting that was facilitated with, by the Crime Convention Council with three frontline workers who, who spoke to this crisis. And, and the message I took away from, from that meeting was the time for storytelling is over. Stories have been told too long, you know, the stories about, you know, some of the situations that they find themselves in, the stories about some of their clients or residents, some of the things that they've had to deal with. The time has come for some kind of action to deal with, not just, you know, the, the problem of, of sheltering and, and shelter care and that, but dealing with the fallout that the staff are, are experiencing. So maybe this puts you on the spot, maybe you need more time to think about it. But like, if there was a couple of things that we could do for the shelter staff to help them with their own mental health and their physical wellbeing, if there was training, education, supports of some sort or another, do you have any sense what that might be?
A couple of comments. You know, Regional Council's been very good. I think there's been multiple attempts through the pandemic. There's videos created by council members and regional staff to kind of show appreciation. And I know our staff appreciated that. I think each of our organizations takes the wellbeing of individuals very seriously and does those kinds of things. I mean, anything we do, Counselor Galloway is, without addressing the root causes, doesn't really change anything. We're then back to Band-Aid. I mean, I think we have to get at what's going on, what's causing this, and addressing those things. That's truly going to make the biggest impact for our team members. And one of those realities is just the incredible growth we're experiencing in Waterloo region. And with that growth comes ramifications. With that growth, you are all aware of the housing crisis we are in, that housing is very inaccessible. And so that's going to make things worse and worse, and there's going to be more and more individuals marginalized. So I, I think the, the greatest gift we can do is, is put in things that will address the root causes of some of those challenges. It's a little bit like at the hospital. I mean, you know, until we do things about COVID, we, we could say all sorts of nice things to doctors and nurses that are dealing with the onslaught of people who are infected with COVID. But until we start addressing and, and the impact of that, that's not, that's what's going to really make a difference for those healthcare providers. So that's the parallel I would draw.
Okay. I appreciate the answer, John. It certainly does tie into some of the, I mean, you know, objectives that we've, we've got, their longer-term solutions. I was hoping that there were some shorter-term solutions in terms of the staff and dealing with their mental health and physical wellbeing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So looking like we've finished our lineup of speakers, I'm looking to vote on the recommendation report CD, sorry, CSD HOU 21-20. Motion, please, moved by. Thank you, Counselor Galloway, seconded by. Thank you, Counselor Foxton. Please use your icons. All of those in favor. And that is carried. Much appreciated, everyone. We are now, we're now moving to the consent agenda. So the items on the consent agenda can be, be approved in one motion or we can have any, any removed. So if you wish to remove any of the items, please indicate so now, as we will not take questions on a consent item unless items are requested to be moved into the regular agenda. The items listed on the consent agenda will be dealt with in one motion. Are there any items you wish to have removed from this consent agenda? No. Okay. So I'm looking for someone to move and then a seconder to approve all of the items. Thank you, Counselor McGary, Counselor Kiefer. Please use your icons. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you so much. 6.1, we are looking, sorry? It was, oh, I'm sorry. I see that right now. Yep. Okay. So we're going to move to the regular agenda items. I'll report the number and ask if there are any questions before calling the vote on the reports with recommendations. So item seven, thriving economy. 7.1. Okay. Yeah. So we're, we're just going to take them both at the same, the same, sorry, thriving economy with sustainable transportation. Looking for the business case update. Any questions? Oh, I'm getting a bit punchy. Sorry. Any questions? Seeing none? Need a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Armstrong, Counselor Galloway. Please use your icons. All those in favor. Good. All those in favor. It is carried. Thank you. 7.2, the maintenance of regional roads within the cities of Cambridge, Kitchener, and Waterloo. Any questions, comments, concerns? Good. Looking for the mover, please. Thank you, Counselor McGary, seconded by Counselor Clark. Please use your icons. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. Right. We are at the amendments to the Kissing Bridge Trailway Advisory Board Terms of Reference. And looking for questions, comments, and concerns. If none, we'll look for a mover. So seeing none, I'm looking for a mover. Counselor Erb, seconded by Counselor McGary. Oh, sorry. Didn't see you there. At the bottom, Counselor Shans, I apologize. All those in favor? Using your icons. And that is carried. And that is carried. So we're on to 7.4. And we've already done it. So we don't even, we're just breezing beyond, there's nothing new. 7.5, on to the paramedic services, 2021 year-to-date performance measurement report. Looking for any questions, comments? It's a report to be received for information, so we're not looking for a motion to accept, okay? 7.6 is the recruitment, selection and appointments of citizen members to regional advisory committees policy. Looking for any questions? Comments, good, okay, a mover? Moved by Chair Edmund, seconded by. Ah, there you are, Council Galway, all those in favor? Use your emotion, your, yep, good, carried. Oh, do you, I'm sorry, Council Clark, you have a question? Please, no, you're good, okay. Okay, good, so we're fine. Business transformation and reimagining service project update. We do have a presentation. Amber Saree? Saree, okay, Amber Saree and Terry Yancey will provide a presentation. Are you guys there? Oh, Bruce is in there too, okay. So everybody's in? Carry on, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just wait for the presentation to come up. There it is, perfect. We've had a busy day, so I want to take the time to just go back to this time last year when we talked about coming through COVID and moving beyond COVID and making sure that this organization as well as this community was as strong as possible. We know that municipalities and public sector organizations around the world are needing to transform. We had pressures before COVID and obviously COVID simply shone a light on those areas, many of which we talked about today, that we need to frankly do better. Today, I want to provide an update on our work around business transformation and reimagining some of the services. The team will give specific examples of what we'll focus on and then also talk about our next steps in moving this work forward. This is a journey. This isn't a once-off, a one-off initiative. It's over many, many years and really turns out to be a way of being. If we can go to the next slide, please. So again, this is the beginning of a journey. We learned a lot about ourselves as an organization, as you know, during the pandemic. Remember all those things that we couldn't do or that took months or even years as an organization, the region as well as, you know, just what any other organization I can think of in this country. Learned to be more nimble, learn to be faster, learn to be more innovative and take more risks, just because we had to. And our community as well expects more of us. As the world adopted to a pandemic or adapted to a pandemic, there's been an increase in pressures. Again, the conversations today were pretty timely. We don't have to go to look very, very far to see challenges in affordable housing, challenges in food security and more. There's also been an increase in the use of technology to allow for different ways of delivering service in an organization that's as large as ours with increasing pressures. We can't simply come back to the taxpayer, back to council saying, hey, just give us more money. We need to free up capacity so that we can deliver more with the same amount of funds. And I know council expects that as do our constituents. So that means reimagining the way we provide services. Again, trying to provide better, not less, not worse, but better services. Maintain the gains that this organization has gained over the last several decades. Try to improve customer service. Try to streamline processes and red tape where possible. And again, create those efficiencies. Let staff have more time to do what they do best, which is provide direct frontline service to 630,000 residents. So with that, I want to turn this over to a few individuals. John Bauer is here with us today. John is the Senior Director from PricewaterhouseCoopers. And John and his team have experience working with municipalities and public sector organizations across the country. John, we're glad you're with us today. Your team's been tremendous and great to work with. Amber Saree is the Director of Citizen Services and Terry Yancey is the Director of IT Services. Both extremely creative leaders. Super proud of what they and the team have done across the organization to get us started in this. And now I'll turn it over to John to kick things off. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bruce, Madam Chair. My name is John Bauer and I'm with PWC's Public Sector Practice. And I was the Executive Lead of the PWC Team, working with the region's staff to author this report. As context to the report, there is no doubt that COVID-19 has significantly disruptive working practices, making it imperative for businesses and governments to adapt and act fast. Here at the region, there's no doubt you've had to pivot operations and processes in order to both manage through the pandemic and build resilience for the years ahead. I would say the organizations I work with have accepted that going back the way things were pre-pandemic is not an option. Instead, people want to build a better future that is informed by the lessons of the last year and a half. Some are calling it the new normal or building back better. But whatever you call it, it's a common global theme. This theme is reinforced by PWC's Global Consumer Insights Survey from this past summer, which showed that we've seen an acceleration of the shift to digital and new consumer behaviors have emerged, such as the channel choices customers are making to identify which channel they would like to receive services through. After seeing multiple survey results, we believe that these changes in preferences, while in some cases were driven by the pandemic and the need to go virtual, they are sticking over time. Additionally, PWC's 24th CEO Survey from earlier this year identified that a top priority for public sector leaders such as yourselves was investment in digital transformation. The goals are to enable their workforce to meet customer expectations, embrace innovation and create value for citizens and staff. This report and the work undertaken builds on these trends and themes and lays the foundation for near-term service enhancements through specific projects as well as future ideas by establishing a process and methodology for building and maintaining momentum for ongoing improvement. A key element of this work was how collaborative it was and the high degree of staff engagement. Our team was impressed by the enthusiasm and energy demonstrated by the region's staff and leadership throughout our numerous workshops and sessions and wants to thank them for their support, their time and their valuable contribution. I want to now briefly take a moment to walk you through our two-pronged approach to identify opportunities to transform. Our approach for this work followed two threads. The first thread on the left-hand side of the slide was the gathering of ideas or use cases. This was done very collaboratively through workshops, interviews, surveys, sessions, where we shared lessons and ideas from other jurisdictions to seed those ideas. And we facilitated the workshop to solicit ideas from staff. So as we think back, these were ideas to apply advanced analytics, robotic process automation or artificial intelligence to the way regional staff do their work that could offer them or their customers high value. These identified those areas ripe for enhancement. The other thread was an assessment of current state capabilities. And by that, we mean skill set, capacity and ability to execute based on current tool set or the quality of the data that exists. That allowed us to assess feasibility. And we bring those two together, those two threads, that allows us to turn the art of the possible into the art of the feasible. We then needed to narrow those down, so we needed to apply some prioritization. Now I'd like to briefly speak to our process. The first step was idea generation. And here we identified over 60 opportunities after engaging with 55 staff members across six departments. And this open-ended portion answered the question, if we could do anything, what are our biggest pain points and what would we want to do about it? We then naturally needed to shortlist that. And so step two is where we applied criteria to get an initial view on what opportunities meet the overall direction of leveraging AI, automation and advanced analytics to produce meaningful efficiencies or find tangible time savings that can be enjoyed by the region's staff and citizens. This step answered the question, what does the opportunity landscape look like at the region and what areas are project-ready? And that resulted in about a dozen use cases. And finally, we refined that further. By applying narrower evaluation criteria, we prioritized the shortlist even further, identified the top three opportunities that we felt were the highest value to pursue. And that answered the simple question, based on current state capabilities, what are the highest value contenders? And the outcome there was a set of three with a backpocket backlog of five additional opportunities for future consideration. Now, while the main goal to us was to tactically get to a top set of opportunities, at a high level, there were other important outcomes of this exercise, namely, it allowed staff to learn this methodology and generate ideas and prioritize. Portfolio view of ideas that can have ongoing refinement and prioritization. And we found that it channeled very positive energy. And we genuinely found enthusiasm of how the region can apply new ways of working and continuously improve. And now, Amber, I'll hand it back to you to walk us through the initial implementation plans.
Thank you very much, John. The top three use cases will be targeted for immediate implementation, with the remaining five iteratively following to sustain the momentum created by the first set and to maximize economies of scale. Each of the opportunities is aimed at supporting the region of Waterloo and finding our efficiencies and opportunities to create additional value and improve customer service. So we have three prioritized items which are moving forward in 2021. The Service First Contact Center will implement omni-channel conversational AI. Today, a resident calls with a simple issue. They may, depending on the time of day, wait in queue for a period of time to receive the information from a live agent. In the near future, the same resident could use their phone or computer to engage with a chatbot on our website to have simple questions answered. This will give the resident flexibility to have their questions answered immediately and conveniently. Shortly after rolling out the chatbot, we will introduce eChat, which will allow the citizen to be passed through to a live agent to have more complex questions answered through this new service delivery channel. This technology and the new channel will allow our customer service representatives to spend more time on complex requests for those residents who do choose to call the contact center. In corporate services, the facilities team will seek to optimize and automate the scheduling process for maintenance. Today, work order sufficient, prioritization and scheduling is done through a series of manual and automated processes. There's an opportunity to automate this process and reduce both the manual effort as well as maximizing the efficiency of schedules for completing the building and equipment maintenance work. This will create capacity for more proactive maintenance and create efficiencies across the process. Our third project for 2021. In community services, Sunnyside Home will automate the current manual staff scheduling process. Automating the efforts of manually creating and managing staff schedules will allow Sunnyside Home to be more efficient and effective in ensuring that our residents are well cared for. Staff will also have increased opportunities to digitally navigate changes to their schedule for more convenient access. We have five other opportunities which will commence in early 2021. We have an internally-facing conversational AI that will leverage the technology which will be implemented within the Service First Contact Center, providing an opportunity for internally-facing services like IT, human resources, finance, facilities and procurement to provide basic information and services to staff through chatbot technology. We will have automated information gathering based on housing applications to better highlight missing information during the process and help ensure that all of the correct and necessary information is collected upfront. We will implement automated processing of tickets and fines and automated self-scheduling capability for citizens through the Provincial Offenses Administration. And finally, we will take data from external systems that public health and emergency services work and automate the extraction of that information into our internal systems to reduce the manual effort involved by staff today. Terry Yancey is now going to discuss the foundational technology to support our path forward.
Good afternoon, Council, thank you, Amber. Yeah, from a technology perspective, there's really two key elements to this foundational transformation we're going through. One is around the technology itself. So from an IT perspective, clearly we'll always have our security, privacy and data governance mandates to meet. And providing that data across the region and to the public where possible is one of the key areas we want to grow in. And as Amber noted in the use cases, and as John noted, and there's almost 60, one of the things we're most excited about in IT is taking an approach where we can share and leverage the technologies that we implement across the region. So it's not just a chatbot in the contact center. It can be used, as Amber said, in other public-facing areas within the corporation itself, be it IT, be it HR, be it finance. And the third part of the technology is our own capacity and our capabilities. So we're looking to grow our capacity to take on these projects. We're looking for skills in advanced automation, advanced technologies, AI. And we're looking to take advantage where we can of the fact we're living in the tech hub of Canada, because there's a lot of partners in the region that can help us with some of these projects right next door. And then the other part of this transformation is the methodology that John described that we went through. We're looking to take this opportunity identification and implementation methodology and make it the way we do our business every day. So as Bruce said, this isn't just about, this is a new way of thinking. It is for us in IT. I can tell you I'm the IT staff here at the region. It's been an exciting time supporting the region through COVID. We've learned a lot about how we can be more effective and we're looking to take better advantage of that as we go forward. So I think I'll just pass it back to Bruce and he can wrap us up.
Thanks very much, John, Amber and Terry. And as they said, 55 staff. We're intimately involved in this initiative and many more behind, so. We'll continue as we rethink how we can deliver service in order to achieve, you know, world-class services across the community. How we can leverage this momentum that we've created during the pandemic and build upon that, as Terry and Amber have said. We know that employees across the country are rethinking their work experience. Our staff certainly are as committed to their work as any group of staff that I've ever met. Our leaders definitely want to make sure that they're well-supported. And that means using technologies in different ways as well to support staff as they deliver customer service to 630,000 residents. As Amber and Terry have said, more opportunities have been identified. And this is really a foundational piece as we learn to adopt these new technologies. And again, I don't want people to think this is something that we're doing and we're pioneering this. We use technology every day. In fact, some of this technology is so good, I often can't tell when I'm talking to a real person or whether technology is supporting it. I think Amber also hit on the point that technology's not for everything. Everyone, sorry, and I'm sure council will have those questions. This frees up, as Amber has said, the time that our call center staff, as an example, and other staff spend for people who may not be comfortable with technology, people who may not have access to technology and those really complex situations that we have in this community so we can spend more human time, which we know is sorely lacking as we become a more technology-literate society. So with that, happy to take questions or the team's able to take questions as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry about that. So I'm not seeing any comments, but it did look quite interesting. Chair Edmund, you want to make some comments? Are you going to be a bot for us?
No, I'm wondering how long it'll take till they replace us with bots. I just really want to commend staff for being innovative and creative internally as well as following what trends we see across the nation. And just actually to give a shout out, I think most of council will recognize, but during the vaccine rollout, our call center did yeoman's work and they were absolutely amazing. And we would not have gotten where we were with community vaccinations if it wasn't for them. So I'm hoping that this AI will augment them because they do amazing work and we really owe a lot to them for the smoothness of our vaccine rollout.
Okay, apologizable. We're good, okay. So thank you for those words. I think now, there's no motions here. We're just looking to, are there any council inquiries, requests for information tracking? Okay, there's nothing there. And do we have any other business? Okay, our next meeting is, no. Oh, yeah, sorry, I apologize. We have to return to closed, you guys. We're almost finished, so sorry. And we'll went to great lengths to make sure I remembered that. I still almost forgot it, okay. So I need a motion to close or to adjourn and then we'll go into closed.